Department of Fireworks. Happy Fourth of July, everyone.
If you can all please just stand for the pledge of allegiance. Paul Fernandez, are you here from Santa Ana High School? See no... Oh, you're come on down, please, Paul. Go ahead.
Can you put your right hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, of which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Paul. Now we have Tom Jones, our police chaplain. Going to give us our invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, we ask that these words resonate with us tonight, Lord, and that the needs and the work that needs to be done here tonight might reflect what was done in heaven. Lord, that you would have control over it. God, we ask that you put your hands upon the council and the mayor, that you would give them wisdom, guidance. Lord, we ask for that the program for the homeless, Lord, that you might bless it, that you would keep your hands about it, Lord, and those that are working in it, we ask that you help them to be steadfast and that they'll continue to work as hard as they can. And God, we ask that you be with the rest of the services here tonight, that you will be with the people, Lord, that you'll bless them. And God, we ask that you be with the law enforcement tonight, that you'll be with the men and women that are out on the streets, Lord, that you keep them safe. We ask for the fire department, that you'll keep the men and women there safe, Lord. And Lord, we ask these things in your son's precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. And I'm going to call on Mayor Protem Sarmiento and also on Councilman Dina Hedo, who's not here yet, but I believe he's going to recognize May 22nd as Harvey Milk Day. Mayor Protem Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have Laura Cantor join me, I think I just saw her. Laura, you were about to sit down, and we're going to get you get back up again. As Laura and her colleagues make her way up here to the dais, I wanted to tell you that this was a recognition proclamation, actually, that Councilman Dina Hedo and I were going to do jointly, and he happens to be out of town. I guess, is he out at one of the debate tournaments, or we don't know where he is, but I know he's here in spirit. This is a very special recognition that he does with me every year, and we do it proudly, and we do it with the support of the council and the support of all our residents here. So Laura is here representing the LGBT Center OC. She's the director of the Policy and Advocacy and Youth Program, so it's great to see all the young faces here and the beautiful flag, and welcome all of you to your house, the city's chamber. And so I have been very fortunate to be able to join Councilman Dina Hedo in recognizing these good folks and the good work that we do together. And it really is a celebration of diversity. It's a celebration of tolerance. It's a celebration of being accepting of folks from many different backgrounds. So it's exactly in our wheelhouse here in the city. So we thank all of you for always joining us. And I'm trying to remember, Madam Secretary, how many years has it been now since we've done the recognition of Harvey Milk Day?
At least three years.
At least three years. So, you know, I think for us, it was one of the first things done in the county to recognize Harvey Milk, and so we're always trying to sort of pave the path for other cities and other communities to celebrate things that are important to all of us. And being accepting and being diverse is something that's very important to us. But for those of you who don't know the legacy and the history of Harvey Milk, let me just mention a few key points. I'm going to go ahead and give the floor to Laura so she can talk to us a little bit more about it, because Laura has been a great leader and advocate for the community, and I know we're working on many things together. We have a flag now that we have that flies in front of our city hall, and we do that very proudly because it represents an important community, an important population in our city. So we do that along with many other cities. In 1977, Harvey Milk was elected to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and became the first openly gay person to be elected, a prominent public official in the United States. In 2009, President Obama awarded Harvey Milk with the Presidential Medal of Freedom for his contribution to the gay civil rights movement. Harvey Milk inspired many locally and nationally to live openly, to create a world free of prejudice and discrimination. The LGBT Center OC was established in 1971 as one of the oldest gay and lesbian community centers in the United States. The LGBT Center OC focuses on empowering every segment of the LGBT community in Orange County so that they have the resources needed to thrive in their own lives and communities. And currently, the LGBT Center OC provides services to more than 10,000 individuals. So while we celebrate Harvey Milk and all the work that he did locally in San Francisco as one of the first openly gay elected officials, but really across the country because he set in motion something that all of us now realize is so natural, you know, and for us to be, to speak about an elected official that is gay or lesbian is not really something that raises eyebrows like it did back then. So we know and we're thankful for those folks because we all stand on their shoulders of all the good work and all the difficult work that they did because, you know, back then, even in San Francisco, even in the Bay Area, things weren't as accepting and as tolerant. And I'm really grateful that the environment is much different, but that environment is different because of people like Laura Cantor and folks at the LGBT Center here in Orange County. So Laura, with that, if you don't mind, why don't you share a couple of words with us and tell us a little bit more?
Thank you very much. Sure. That's so cool. Thank you, Mayor Polito. Thank you, city council members. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Thank you all. We had a little rattle on our way to standing here. One of our youth was attacked by a transient person and pushed into the fountain and held in the fountain. And thank you to the city manager, Mr. Cavazos, for getting a dry t-shirt for Christian, who's decided he's standing here with no shoes because his shoes are soaking wet, his pants are soaking wet and dripping on your floor, and I'm very sorry, but he didn't want to miss this. So he's got a bloody elbow and scratches and said, "I didn't want to miss standing here with you all and being part of this with the community." So if you want to know the legacy of Harvey Milk, it's right here. And this is it. So we have some of our board members, staff from the LGBT Center OC, and our youth from Santa Ana who have been fighting for their own rights and their safety in their schools. And it's a great honor for me to stand here with them. So I want to thank you for inviting me to be present and for all that the city is doing to increase awareness and support for the Santa Ana LGBT community and really all of Orange County, because this is where it's all happening. I thank you for your willingness to support flying the pride flag every year at city hall. It's a courageous act, and it demonstrates that the city and the city council are willing to act on the values of respect and dignity for all. In 1977, Harvey Milk, as Councilman Sarmiento said, was the first openly gay public official elected in California. He took his place as supervisor in city hall at San Francisco.
There you go.
Yeah, that would be nice. And he was quite a visionary leader. He called upon Americans to stay true to the guiding principles of equality and justice for all. His fight to call out and put an end to bigotry and discrimination shattered boundaries and challenged assumptions. I'm not going to read the whole thing because now it's long, now I want to get done. One of the things that Milk especially, Harvey Milk understood especially was that we can't end social injustice in isolation. He understood that our liberation means recognizing that all of our struggles are intimately connected, and when we work together across the boundaries that divide us, we strengthen our political power. That's how he got elected. As we honor Harvey Milk and celebrate our progress, I hope we will continue to fight together to make sure that all of our elected officials fight with us for the values of diversity, inclusion, and equality that the city of Santa Ana is lifting up today and every day. Harvey Milk said, "Rights are won only by those who make their voices heard," and that's what we're doing here in Santa Ana. That's what the youth do. That's what our team does. And sometimes that's what I do to the sometimes not so great, not so welcomed ears of some of the city leaders, but we're all fighting together for social justice for all people, and we have to work together and lift each other up. And that's what Harvey taught us, and this is the legacy of Harvey Milk right here. So thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Laura, do you mind if Christian comes and joins us up here? I think he's earned it after, you know. So our struggle isn't over, right? Our struggle continues, and the work and the advocacy and the, I guess, the teaching and the education continues. So this just shows that we're on the right path, but we've got a ways to go. We have to make sure we educate all of our folks, not just in town, but everywhere we go. And it's funny, the mayor and I were talking about, you know, Harvey Milk. When he was assassinated, he was assassinated by one of his colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, Dan White. And as an attorney, I remember this case because it was pretty famous, he used a defense called the Twinkie Defense. So he said that he ate Twinkies, and that had his blood sugar rise, which caused him to lose control, and he was acquitted as a result of that defense. I don't know if anybody else has ever used that successfully, but it's something that's in the law books and really doesn't make any sense whatsoever. But nonetheless, our objective here is to recognize the work that's been done, but also the work that continues and the work that continues to be needed to be done in our community. So let me just read one whereas clause, and then we'll go ahead and give this proclamation to both Laura and Christian, if you'll accept it on behalf of the entire community. In 2009, the state of California designated May 22nd as Harvey Milk Day as a day of recognition to commemorate the birth of a hardworking, committed, and dedicated gay rights leader. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, do hereby recognize Thursday, May 22nd, as Harvey Milk Day. Thank you very much. Accept this on behalf of the entire community.
Everybody needs to accept it because we all work together.
Come on in.
Christian wouldn't be standing here without Stephanie and the other youth, so everybody should all learn that. So Stephanie is our hero tonight.
All right. Well, let's have everybody accept it, but let's have Christian here to be the closest person to hold it. So thank you all. Let's give them all a big round of applause, and let's share it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarmiento. Very good presentation. And now talking about another good presentation, I want to recognize Councilmember David Benavides, and I believe he's going to be recognizing officers of, from the Santa Police Department. So I'll turn it over to him for the next two presentations. And then after that, Councilman Martinez will be making two presentations as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our officers from our HEART program if they would join me. Pierre Comandere, if you could bring your team here. You know, we have a lot of hardworking staff within the city and all the various departments, and we don't usually have the opportunity to highlight the hard work of all of them, whether it be in parks or here at city hall or under Public Works. But specifically tonight, actually, I feel like in a lot of ways, I am standing here conveying a message. We received a message from members of the community, and so I thought it was important to be able to bring this forward and to recognize this team. And y'all can pull a little bit closer. You don't have to be too far back or too far away. Y'all are the ones carrying guns. I'm not armed, yet you're standing a little bit of a distance. But we have here in the city, a number of years ago, we created a program called the HEART Team, and it stands for Homeless Evaluation Assessment Respond Team, to provide outreach and service to the homeless community. We know that this is a very real need and a felt need in our community here. The city of Santana, being the largest city, being the county seat, like a lot of larger metropolitan cities, the homeless community gathers in those areas. There's a lot of services that are concentrated in those areas, and we've been seeing the impacts here in the city as the economy a few years ago took a significant dive. A lot more people ended up out of a home and out on the streets, and a number of them gathered here. It's not too common that you find, there are a lot of different nonprofit organizations and social service organizations that provide support and service to the members of the community that find themselves homeless. But here in Santana, we have a unique approach in that in partnership with these service providers, we have men and women in uniform that also express their compassion, their desire to serve and protect by serving the homeless community. This team creates a balanced approach of services and community support and compassionate enforcement. The HEART officers identify and determine an individual's need, then collaborate with government, nonprofit partners to provide needed assistance. The HEART officers then link the people in the civic center to service providers to help end homelessness. This program sets its sights on self-sufficiency for those desiring to escape homelessness. So it's more than a Band-Aid or one-time approach, but really the focus is to look at how they can support families to be able to have ultimately end up in a permanent home. Partners to the HEART Team include AA programs, Amtrak, OAS, Casa Pacifica, Casa Teresa, a number of others, Mercy House, Save Ourselves, Social Security, Veterans Affairs, Supportive Housing, Illumination Foundation, a number of others. And this is one of the things that's important as well, is that it's been serving our community, this team, for three years, and the HEART Team has contacted over 1,000 homeless persons during that period of time and provided services to approximately 550 and helped 158 individuals completely out of homelessness. 158 folks who are no longer having to sleep out on a sidewalk, under a tree, that have been able to make their way into a permanent home. I mentioned earlier that we have, that in a lot of ways, I feel like I'm standing in for members of the community that actually sent us at the city a note, and it was, and I'm going to read it to you because that's really what compelled us to make this recognition tonight. And this is a handwritten note that reads as follows. "Santa Ana Police Department Staff and HEART. We wanted to say thank you all for your help. You gave us a new life. You will forever, we will forever remember all of you and appreciate your kindness and generosity. Melissa is doing well. Her treatments have been intense, and we have had some scary moments, but her strength gets her and us through it. We pray that God blesses all of you with a happy and blessed Easter. May God keep all of you in his loving care as you protect and serve us. Thank you. Always thinking of you with love and appreciation. God bless you all. Our love and thanks, the Seong family." This is a handwritten note from a family, Josh, Kathleen, Leila, Kayla, and Melissa, that were served by these officers and that, again, have gone, they go above and beyond. So on behalf of this family, there's so many that they serve, will we please give a round of applause to these officers for their dedication? And I'm going to ask, one, if you can maybe share a little bit about either this story or just the experience of serving the community. I know that we've got a whole kind of order. You've got our chief and commander, and you've got a corporal on the team, so I don't know who would...
It's hard to follow that letter. All of us came on, including the chief, to make arrests and serve the community, but there is nothing greater than getting someone out of homelessness and, you know, putting them up in shelter. I was just doing the monthly report, and I read that one of our officers saved a family. She had a four-year-old daughter, and they were homeless for whatever reason. I've always said, we're all three paychecks away from being homeless ourselves, so we have to have that compassion and knowing that we've been able to hook them up with other family members or other organizations. We could not be successful if it wasn't for our city leadership, our chief, and all the nonprofits, including the county. These officers do a fabulous job of trying to find those that need help, that just don't know how to get that help. And I personally thank you all for all the great help, and we're here to help those in need, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commander Ibarra. I would like to hand one of these to each of the officers. Imagine we have one for each of the officers present, and something that you can take home and show your family, just the appreciation that our community has for you and your work. This one is, I'll read from the city of Santana's certificate of recognition awarded to Officer Matt Chitjin in recognition of your outstanding work with HEART program. Officer Chitjin?
Thank you, sir.
Officer David Enriquez. Officer Cassandra Hawkins. Corporal Juan Montiel. Officer Judy Valdez. And Commander Ruben Ibarra. Thank you very much again, once again. One more round of applause here for the team. I'm going to ask at this time, the next recognition that we have is for a couple members of our community, Mario and Tricia Morales and Victory Outreach Southeast Santana, if you would join us here. You know, there is, we live in a very dynamic city, a city that a lot of us dearly love and care for. We have a city like, again, major cities, metropolitan centers. We face challenges as well. That's a reality. We don't hide that. There's a lot of positive things going on in our community, but we also know that we face some challenges. And one of the stark realities of big cities is the activity that gangs bring to our streets. Number of, a couple of meetings back, some of the, well, the council as a whole was, made some comments and asked for the staff's support to work with our community to be able to address some of the challenges that we've been seeing in the last couple of months when it comes to gang activity. One of the things that we asked is for our staff to work together because we had heard that there were members of the community, community groups and leaders that were coming together that wanted to be able to do something in response to some of the negative activity out there. And one of the key things that they wanted to do is to be able to hold a peace and unity march and rally. And so here with me, you can also step a little closer here, Mario and Tricia. Mario and Tricia are members and leaders within Victory Outreach Southeast Santana, and they gathered a number of different churches and different community groups and residents from throughout the city, and basically wanted to be able to stand in unity and send the message that we love this city, and we believe and are committed to the peace of our city, and to work together collectively to reduce and end the violence in the city of Santana. So it was a beautiful sight when on Saturday morning, we had members of community start, gather in four different parts of town, El Salvador Park towards the north, over Harburn McFadden on the west end, over in the east part of town at Lathrup, and then over at Adams Park and Adams Elementary down the south part of town. And they all started then coming together wearing white t-shirts. So you had these large groups walking throughout our community and declaring peace over our city and praying over our community, and then gathering at Jerome Park. You can just see this sea of folks in white t-shirts coming together and filling that park and just taking their resources as well provided. And there were a number of folks that were just there to, again, demonstrate that our community is standing up against the violence and the challenges in our community. There were a number of community partners as well, businesses that participated and supported, North Key Gonzalez, Walmart, La Curazao, a number of others. And all of that, this came together also, some of our counterparts over at, across at the school board, Valle de Mesqua, school board members, Cecilia Iglesias was there as well, members of the council that were able to make it, Councilman Mayor Protem Sarmiento, Councilman Reyna, Councilwoman Martinez as well, our police chief from the school district, Commander Gominski, and some of the team from within the city as well. It was, again, just a great thing to be able to see everybody coming together, believing in the peace of our community and our city. So it takes a lot to coordinate these types of large events. And Mario and Tricia, on the behalf of the city as a whole and the mayor and the council, we wanted to thank you for all of your efforts and the efforts of Victory Outreach Southeast Santana for standing again in solidarity and working together to be able to make this beautiful event happen. So I would like to give either of you an opportunity, if you'd like to say a couple of words, please, Mario.
Yeah, it was a joint effort. You know, I just want to give thanks to everybody because the call just went out, and everybody jumped to the cause because there's, it just confirms my thought that there's a lot of people that love Santa Ana, and that love that's in Santa Ana, everybody just stepped up, all the stores, the police department, the council, everybody, one time asked them, one time they came out, and it was just a victory for the city. And it doesn't stop there. We're going to continue on doing more and continue pressing forward and trying to reach those that are, how do you say, causing problems out there. So we're just going to try reaching them and helping them, giving them the resources that they need, because we had a resource fair there also, showing different programs that the churches offer, also that the city offers, and different types of programs to help the kids, the youth, the older gentlemen, the ones that have been out there for a while. So, you know, just keep us in your prayers, that, you know, good things continue coming out of this, and we still get the same response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario and Tricia. And one of the wonderful things, we are a very, a city that's, you know, one of the youngest in the nation, and we have kids that are doing just wonderful things, leaders in our community, and going off to college and coming back, and professionals and doing so much. Then we have kids that have had a lot of odds stacked against them and have gotten cut up in not so positive things in our community. But one of the things that I think was a strong and a very positive message that this gathering sent is that it's never too late and that we don't give up on any young person. We believe in the future of our community. We believe in the future of our youth. We believe in peace for our city. So I thank you for sending that message, for, again, unifying our community around that message. So on behalf of the mayor and city council in the city of Santana, Mario and Tricia, I'd like to present to you this certificate of recognition in recognition of your outstanding work in organizing the Peace and Unity March and Rally that took place this April 30th. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.[1796.66][1796.66]
Thank you.
And I do have, if you would please forward this recognition to Victory Outreach Southeast Santana for their leadership as well. Thank you so much.
Councilman Benavides, could I just say that Mario kept all the politicians on task? I want to thank you for that, because not too many people are willing to call us out and say, "You only got 30 seconds."
Thank you, Councilman. And the next presentation will be from Councilmember Martinez. I almost said supervisor, so I'm sorry. I just got ahead of myself here. So, Councilmember, the floor is yours.
If I could please have Kia come up here with the Orange County Transportation Authority. And as he comes up here, you know, we are celebrating May as National Bike Month. That's through the 16th through the 20th. But before I highlight, you know, the great work that OCTA is doing, I just do want to make reference, as you all know, in the City of Santa Ana, we've kind of moved in the direction of wanting to provide multimodal transportation in our city. And there are times where we have residents that still have concerns, in particular some of our arterios, Broadway, you know, First Street, Warner, Main, and they're always vigilin' and asking us, you know, "What are you going to do to slow traffic down?" And we've been in partnership with the Orange County Transportation Authority, and I always try to hold Kia accountable. And, but I'll tell you that the Orange County Transportation Authority over the years has done an amazing job in really shifting and changing a culture that, I'll be honest with you, that I didn't think would ever happen. And here I am after, you know, five years later, continuing to honor the great work that they've done. And not only them, but the board of directors for the Orange County Transportation Authority, and Mayor Polito sits on that board. We still have a long way to go, but there is progress. The thing that I always tell residents and community people across Orange County is that we can't always beat up, you know, government. We also have to thank them for the progress that they've made. Even if it's incremental, that progress has been made here in Orange County. It's been made here in the City of Santa Ana, and it only happens when we all work together. And so I want to thank Kia personally for the work that we've done, but I also want to highlight, you know, some of the good things that they're doing and their commitment to Bike Month. And so OCTA is committed to active transportation and has taken a lead in studies to identify major bicycle corridors in each of the five county supervisor districts that will help create a connected bicycle network suitable for riders of all ages and abilities. So OCTA has several related events, and if you all get my newsletter or other, I was able to send this out, and Kia will talk about this a little bit. And, you know, we hired an active transportation coordinator, Paul Martin, he's been distributing this, and we have some activities in the city that are coming up. And it's just a really exciting time, the month of May, and I'm hopeful that our residents will go on to the OCTA website and pledge to ride their bicycles. And there's a lot of awards and prizes for you to receive if you do pledge. So let me talk to you a little bit about, you know, some of the events. And there's just a few, but there's plenty across the county. In particular here, the first opportunity you're going to have is a bike rally on May 12th, beginning at 7:30 a.m. at the Orange Metro Link Station, which I attend every single year, and I look forward to attending on May 12th. And then we also have Bike to Work Week, which I just mentioned earlier, that's May 16th through the 20th. And then in the City of Santa Ana, we're going to be having Blessings of the Bike on May 16th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And I want to thank our staff, our city manager, our public works director, who have participated in the past. And I also want to thank my colleague, Councilman Mayor Portem Sarmiento, who have participated and have been on our bicycles and have participated in Blessings of the Bike. Because I'll tell you that when we're talking about active transportation and Bike to Work Month, the leadership starts at the top. And so, you know, it takes us as leaders to practice what we, you know, what we preach, and we're out there and we're doing things. And so it's exciting to know that we're continuing this effort with the Orange County Transportation Authority. And so Kia, if you just could give us a couple of words of wisdom, and some of the things that your board is doing, and your CEO, as it pertains to active transportation, and what we could look forward to, not only in the present, but in the future.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council, and specially Councilmember Martinez, for honoring OCTA for this month. At OCTA, we look forward to this month because this is an opportunity to show to people that there is another way to get to work, or is it to school, or just for fun? To have, there's another option other than thinking about the car all the time. So hopefully, the events this month are designed to help people to learn that there are, to learn about the option, and hopefully, and to do it safely, because that's really important. And there is, there will be educational programs. And at the same time, OCTA does have, please go on OCTA.net, look at our promotions. We have a number of videos that kind of tells both the drivers how to do it safely, and as well as how to the bicyclists, how to kind of make sure that they're safe out there. And so this is a big month. I left copies of this flyer out there on the table as well, so if anybody didn't get it, please make sure it's there. But if you didn't, if you stole, if it ran out, just go to OCTA.net and take part in some of the events. If you can't, just make the pledge to yourself and try to at least ride the bike one day, and see, it's a beautiful environment, it's a beautiful city. Enjoy it, and it's also good for your health. With that, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kia. So there are a lot of wherestes, and I'm just going to read a couple of them as I do my next presentation, as it pertains to small business. So I'm going to start here. Whereas more businesses have installed bicycle parking and other community facilities to help customers and employees who choose alternative means of transportation. And whereas bicycle transportation is integral part of our multimodal transportation system planned by the federal, state, regional, and local transportation government agencies, OCTA is committed to active transportation and has taken a lead in studies to identify major bicycle corridors in five of the county supervisor districts to help create a connected bicycle network. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. And thank you for the gift. Love the shirt. Next, if I could have Dave Elliott, please, join me. And I'm going to do a proclamation on Small Business Week, and want to thank my colleague, Councilman Reyna, who always says, "What?"
Shop Santa Ana.
Shop Santa Ana, that's right. And, you know, as you look at our downtown, if you look at the upgrades at Main Place Mall, you know, you're starting to see, and Mr. City Manager, how many small businesses do we have in the city?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand. So that's just to tell you that they are the backbone of this community. And so just wanted to make sure that we were able to bring someone, and no other than our good friend, David Elliott, from the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce, who interacts with these small businesses day in and day out. Before I do read, you know, the proclamation and all the wherestes, I want David Elliott just to talk about the chamber. What is he doing for small businesses, and how can we continue to partner to making sure that we have a very successful business climate here in the City of Santa Ana?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Martinez, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for recognizing businesses. And you took my thunder, David. I was going to just talk about 28,000 businesses that serve Santa Ana, are in Santa Ana, doing business in Santa Ana. And we have the privilege as a Chamber of Commerce to be a voice of business here in Santa Ana. And I always tell people, Santa Ana is a business city. We have 28,000 businesses, all shapes and sizes, but the far, far majority of them are small businesses, under 25 employees. We have a great area for entrepreneurs now that are coming into the city, that are starting new businesses. We're really encouraging that. The chamber, we're involved with retention. We, every month, we have a retention walk. We have about 20 people that are out, walking streets, knocking on doors, just talking to businesses about what's, what are the areas that they have issues with? Is it homelessness? Is it graffiti? Is it potholes? Things like that. Because it's important for the businesses that are here that we hear what they have to say, so that we can retain those businesses as well as attract. And then we're working with the city and other public and private entities to bring in business here into our great city of Santa Ana. So it's, on behalf of those 28,000-plus businesses, we accept this proclamation, because good business is great for Santa Ana. Thank you.
So, national small business is May 1st through the 7th, and so that's why we're highlighting national small business here in the City of Santa Ana. And I know our staff is working with, you know, my colleagues, and we're soon going to have our campaign out, you know, to shop, local shop Santa Ana, and that will be coming out very soon in our support to small business. And so I'm very excited to provide this recognition to the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce for its great work that it's done over the years and many years here in this great city, the partnership that we've had. And it's my hope that we continue to have a strong partnership, David, as we move forward. Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend any of you guys' events because they're during the day, and we all have to work here as elected officials. But I'm hopeful that, you know, in the near future, that I will get to attend some of your events, because I see them on Facebook, and I see the amazing participation for various business organizations that also have partnered up with the Chamber of Commerce. And it's all about collaboration. And when we're able to collaborate with one another and unite, it's only a stronger front for the City of Santa Ana. So I want to thank you for that. So let me do the wherestes. Whereas for over 126 years, the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce has advocated for the business community in central Orange County, the chamber works continuously to draw new business companies in this area, strengthening our economic base, and provide more jobs for our residents. And whereas, the mission of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce is to broker community solutions that create economic growth. And whereas, the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce has represented and served as a voice for various local businesses and has helped several thousands of individuals. And whereas, the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce has been a key partner with the city in promoting community by recruiting new businesses to locate here, participating in efforts to improve the community's quality of life, including educational institutions. And I just personally just want to thank them for High School, Inc., and that educational partnership, and in particular, our culinary program. And again, those students won the championship again and are going to Washington, D.C., and I'm hopeful to bring them next month and congratulate them. And that wouldn't have been possible, Dave, if it wasn't for your board's leadership and yourselves to moving us in that direction. And so I'm just extremely proud every time I see that in the paper, and I get a text message from, you know, the teacher, and I'm just like, "Oh, my God, this is so awesome that we could have a partnership with the business community and the school sector." So now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, do hereby recognize May 1st through the 7th of 2016 as National Small Business Week, and encourage all our residents of Santa Ana to observe Small Business Week and learn more about the American entrepreneurs that help drive our nation's economy, and in particular, here in the City of Santa Ana. So please shop, you know, in our downtown, Main Place Mall, South Coast Metro area. We have about 28,000 businesses. Please support them. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Let me just say two quick things. First of all, I haven't been here 126 years. First thing. And then secondly, just a quick announcement. We'll be having our State of the City with our Mayor Polito on June 29th. Look for that at the Bowers Museum.
Great.
Thank you.
Take a picture, Dave.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, council, I'm going to bring your attention to the agenda. We have nothing to report out at a closed session, because we had no closed session. And I'm just going to read some items that I want to pull, Madam City Clerk, then I'll entertain a motion on the balance, then we'll come back to these items. Item 19E, 28, 20B, 25J, 25K, 25L, 25M, and 25I. So with those items right now polled and set aside, I'd like to entertain a motion on the balance.
So, second.
Okay, we have motion of second.
You can't vote on it.
Well, 25J, we're going to poll. 31B, 31B, 22A. I don't know if, you know, Robert here, this is Robert Denglin and Ija Denglin, they want to speak like on a bunch of items. I'm willing to bring them up, but, you know, they don't get three minutes on eight or seven different items. So, madam, well, not madam, today is Mr. Deputy City Attorney. I'm just going to bring them up and give them three minutes each as chair.
That's correct, Mayor. You may limit the public comment period to three minutes. As a general rule, if they have submitted a comment cards for both general comment and a specific matter, it can be three minutes for each, but you may limit the comment periods respectively to three minutes.
Well, they want to speak on 22A, 22B, 20A, 20B, 25E, and 55C.
Yes, Mayor, as is the case with all public comments, you may limit their public comment period.
So I'm going to tell them they have to speak about all of these within three minutes and give us their best shot. These are not public hearings.
That's correct.
All right. So Robert and Iya, we're going to call you up in a moment. But meanwhile, with, I'm going to add item 31B to the list of items that are polled, just because some folks from the audience wish to speak on this item.
Mr. Mayor, and was 25I polled?
Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
Yes. So with that, let me just take a motion on the balance. Those in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, let's come back and let's start with item 19E as an Edward. Councilwoman Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be brief. This is just an update on our park ranger program. And I want to thank our chief and our city for providing us an update. But it has been brought to my attention, you know, the two park rangers that we have, now we are down to one. No, we had three, now we're down to two. And so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the conversations we had, you know, a year or so ago, you know, there was a dispute with, you know, with, you know, I guess myself and staff, as it pertains to where we were going to be with our park rangers. And I bring this up because, you know, in our park system and what we're facing with our police department, there's a lot of concerns out there in our community as it pertains to not having enough, one, police officers out on our streets, but two, not enough park rangers to be patrolling our park. And those were concerns that were brought up to us when this issue was discussed, when they ended up going to the police department, out of the parks, and rec department. And we've had, you guys have stayed true to providing this update about the park ranger program. And so I'm just hopeful, you know, it's now going on to a year where we're at, and what are the next steps? Because ultimately, the quality of life of our residents is very important, and I think they continue to have concerns. And even though we're getting these updates, we need to know what our next steps to making sure that we actually have people out on our parks. You know, there's a homeless issue population over there at Fisher Park and that area, and there's a lot of concerns. And so I just want to see how we can address those. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, the mayor, and the council. We have heard the same comments. We're very grateful to you for bringing it up here publicly. We did have some people we hired. Unfortunately, they ran into issues, and they were, some of them were terminated. We also are having a hard time hiring part-time people. The economy's really, really good. A lot of these people are qualified. It requires post-certification. So the chief and I talked, and it'll be at the next budget meeting on the 17th, but we're going to recommend full-time park rangers, because then we can find people and accordingly. So I think we're going to have some good news in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the update. Move the item forward, unless there's...
No, not just, the comments, just piggybacking, I appreciate that very much. I've been getting a lot of phone calls from some of our participants in our parks programs and our little leagues, and they're seeing an escalation of activity. So I'm looking forward to seeing more park rangers out there. Thank you.
So we have motion of second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 28.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just have to recuse myself from this item. Just had an abundance of caution. I work directly with the Orange County with OC Pitch, and even though I don't receive funds directly, one of my employees does. So in the abundance of caution, I'm going to just remove myself from this... of caution, I'm going to just remove myself from this item.
I'll move it. Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 20B.
Oh, that's me, too.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 20B, if I could have staff or, I don't know if our city manager could address this. So I'm definitely supportive of its concept, and I understand that Costa Mesa, you know, there's potential savings for us, but Costa Mesa needs to, you know, do something within its plan. And my concern is that we are, it's over a million dollars. And I understand the different funds of where we're going to get this money, but is this going to impact other programs that we're doing with these particular water funds?
It does not. And it's temporary move, and at the end of the project, it will save us a lot more money because we don't have to go ahead and remove the improvement that Costa Mesa put in place. So we coordinating this thing, we coordinating the timeline, and we would save money as a result of it. It would not impact any of that.
Yeah, and I only ask this question because when it's over a million dollars, you know, that right there to me just brings up red flags. Okay, why are we doing this? Why are we transferring that kind of money? And it's going from our water funds. And I understand why we need to do this. And so I'm just, if we can continue to keep us in the loop, making sure that, you know, Costa Mesa is scheduled on time, and that we get to then move forward with our plans, so that, you know, what I don't want to happen is a year later, coming back to me and saying, you know, what, Costa Mesa didn't meet its deadline. Now it's caused problems for us. And instead of saying we were going to have savings, we no longer have savings, we're having to put in another million dollars. And so I'm just wanting us to make sure that we hold folks accountable, and that we're able to complete what we set out to do with these funds.
Understood.
Thank you, and I'll move this item.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Martinez, second by Masquado. Those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to, I know the next item is 25I, Madam Clerk, but the mayor's off the dais, and I need to recuse myself on this one. Do you mind if we just go to 25J? And I believe that's yours, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I see our Parks and Rec Director that is standing back there, and this is the item for synthetic turf to replace the services at Dan Young Soccer Complex, Field 2 and 4. And so, as you know, state law, they've been talking about the health hazards of synthetic turf. And I just have a question as they're pending up at the state legislature, and if we've been keeping track of that? And what does that mean for us? And what kind of synthetic turf are we actually getting? Is that new technologies? Are we using prior technologies? If you just could share that, because there are many residents in our community that, you know, as it's been out in the media, that some of this synthetic turf is not healthy, and just wanting to make sure that we are moving in the right direction.
There have been, for many years, the debate on whether it's healthy or not healthy going on. There haven't been any conclusive studies, one way or the other, but there's always been this discussion for like over 10 years. We have been following the issue with the yards to the legislation. It has not, what it has done, it has focused people on making sure that they get the best product, the best quality product. And the Public Works Department can speak more to the specifics of the quality, but from my perspective, I read it is, this is why we did an RFP and not a bid process, so that we can be very selective. They did an excellent job. I'm very happy with the recommendation of the product. And the soccer community, some of them are here, can't wait. I think if everything goes to plan, I think it'll be August 2016 for two fields at Dan Young Soccer Complex.
No, and thank you, Mr. Whitmore. And I just bring that up as I sit as a representative, as a statewide, as the California League of Cities, this issue has been brought up various times. And so I'm just wanting to make sure, for the record, that, you know, we are doing our due diligence and making sure that we get the best technology, because this isn't a tune of over $1 million.
Yes, for two fields.
For two fields that we're making a commitment to. And so not only is it the commitment to continuing to make sure.
You should know, these are not new fields. We're replacing the existing synthetic field, which really needs to be replaced.
No, I know. It hasn't been done in quite some time, and it's exciting for the soccer community. But again, just from a health perspective, I wanted to make sure that we put all of this on the record.
I appreciate it. We have been following it, and we feel very confident with the recommendation.
Fantastic. Roman?
Comment. All right, I have comment on the right down the left. Let's start right here, please.
You know, go ahead, Councilmember. I'll come back.
I'm not sure if you're aware, we received some communication today that questioned the cost and the cost differential.
Yes, yes.
Can you speak a little bit more towards that?
Yeah, let me ask our Public Works Director. I can speak to it, but he managed the project, and he can do better on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As Harado put it, this wasn't a low bid contact. We floated the RFP, and we wanted to get the best quality product for the money. And based on the committee's decision, this was the best quality for the money we spent in terms of number of technical specification and also durability of the product. And that's why this product was selected over the one with the minimum bid.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Fred. If you don't mind just staying up there, just, you know, whenever we have the low bidder not prevail, it's important for us to do our due diligence and ask what factors, I mean, you said that they're, you know, the quality of the material, maybe their experience level, even where they're based. And that's one of the questions I had. Where are these, both these companies headquartered?
Okay, so the main categories that were considered were fiber density of the material, it's better, it's longer durability, longer fiber, infill material for playing comfort, and also cryogenic rubber infill, which doesn't let the product float when you have a lot of rain. So these are the, some of the considerations that were made.
Great.
And there was a group of four people, two from Parks and Rec, and two engineers from Public Works were in the panel, evaluating 13 different proposals, and they selected this company.
Got it. Real quickly, where is the prevailing bidder based, and where is the company that is disputing that?
In terms of the cost.
Where they're headquartered, what state, what city, what, where are they from?
I don't have that information. Let me see if the staff is here with that information.
And the reason why I ask is I know when Councilmember Martinez and I, when she was on the Ledge Committee, I continue to be on the Ledge Committee, one of the principles I know that we're trying to work through is when we procure and we bid, we find out, you know, who these companies are. And preferably, if they're within the city, they get, you know, they get the benefit of being a local company. And even if those local companies, you know, come in at a higher amount, we realize that the multiplier effect of them being located within the city or the county helps our residents. They're going to buy materials here, they're going to do different things. So that's a fact, right? You know, we've wanted to implement and making sure that we consider when we're deciding.
Certainly, Mayor Protem, that policy is in effect. We have that consideration every time we receive a bid for any of our projects, and make sure that we have a reasonable preference for local, preferably from the city of Santa Ana, and also if not, from the county, Orange County, and then we go that way. So that's in effect. I don't know if the staff has information as far as where is the source of this company, where they come from. I can get you that information if you like.
And we're awarding it to, is it Sprint Turf or Field Turf?
Field Turf.
Okay, so we're awarding it to Field Turf, and Sprint Turf is the one that's disputing.
That's correct.
And that's not uncommon, that, you know, the low bidder sometimes go.
It's not uncommon when it's low bid, but this is RFP.
Understood. But they can, that's why sometimes the lower bid may not always prevail, even in an RFP, right? And they have a right to contest and say, so that's what I'm saying. Do we have anybody from Sprint Turf here? The, okay. Well, look, I know you guys went through, and you had a very good panel, so I appreciate that. I always want to give those folks an opportunity to come in and voice their objections if they have any. Maybe they can point out, you know, procedural issues. They submitted something. I think what they submitted in writing was very thin. So, you know, it's not as helpful. If somebody were here, and if somebody really cared, and there was some issue, some real issue, I think they would have taken the time to be here. Last question?
It was basically based on lower cost.
Got it.
So we had a lower cost, why didn't we get it?
Thank you, Fred. I appreciate that. Was surcharge money used for this, Harado?
No, not at all. The surcharge is still available. We are able to do, this is Field 2 and Field 4. Field 4 is the strictly for youth, Field 2 strictly for adult. So we still have the monies from the adult's surcharge saved.
Great. Do we know what the balance is on that?
$418,000.
How much change? Just kidding.
No.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay, we have a motion, and that's on... 25J. Any other comment? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I believe now it's 25I.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to recuse myself. I have an economic interest conflict. I received a contribution from the parent company of Waste Management Curbside.
All right. So with that, is there any other comment? If not, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Right, go ahead and come up, please. Addresses on item 25J. Oh, we didn't get a second on the previous motion? Second. Okay, we have a second. Now we'll vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Sorry about that, guys. Okay, here we go.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thanks for allowing me to speak on the 25J, even though you've already voted on it. Couple of things. The, Mr. Sarmiento asked a question. The company that they, you guys just approved was out of Quebec, Canada, not a local company. Number two, our fields have had a 10-year warranty on them in the past. This one offers an eight-year warranty. We use this 24, you know, seven days a week, you know, every month. And with two years left warranty, we really need to think about that. I think it's important that the city council look at that again, even though you voted, just because now there's facts that were brought up in this presentation you guys had online. The other thing is, when I met with City Councilman Menovitas and the city manager, we went out to the, then Dan Young, number 2 and 4, and looked at the fields. And there was a quote, an estimate, when we first started doing this, a million dollars a field to replace them. So now it's $2 million. And I go, why don't we see if we can get a better deal by having both fields done at the same time, which the city did. But with a million dollars left over, why not enhance the city's park or Dan Young, and maybe fix one of the other fields as well? There's still a million dollars out there. There's $418,000 in surplus or surcharge fees to fix all four fields and make all four the landmark in the city of Santa Ana. It's not only for the soccer community, but it's also for the junior pop Warner football and stuff like that. There are football goals set up on the fields. I noticed in the Field Turf, they're going to put football markings on Field Number 4. Well, it doesn't have goalpost. So you're going to field markings, then you're going to have to put goalpost into the ground, and that's going to be another fee that's not included in the estimate. There are goalposts on Field Number 2 for football. So the idea, I think, would be maybe put the football markings on Field Number 2 and not Number 4. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. With that, our next item is 25K.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is on Bristol Street Improvements. And I think I have been clear from the very beginning that I've had concerns about the acquisitions on Bristol. And so I, you know, can't, you know, here today, as we move forward, be, you know, continuing to be supportive. I have to just, you know, put it out there, and I'll be very quick about it, that, you know, the process that we've taken, to me, has been inadequate, and I am not supportive. I think the owners on Bristol, and we'll be also talking about Warner and the acquisitions that we've made, I don't think the process has been equitable. And so, you know, for those reasons, I can't support 25K, and so I'm just going to vote no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have a comment by Councilwoman Martinez. Any other comments, or is there a motion to approve?
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, one no, correct, Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes, no.
Okay, motion carries. Now is it 25L?
And for those reasons as well, 25L, which is in particular using Bristol funds, but also for Warner, West St. Anne Place, and as we move forward in that direction, is I too am not supportive.
Okay, same comment as before. Is there a motion?
Move the item, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, one in opposition, motion carries. 25M?
Mr. Mayor, for the same reasons, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 31A, the applicant, or the speakers, you know, took back their card. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second. I'm going to call for the vote, but for the record, Madam Clerk, I may have received a contribution, so an abundance of cautions I want to abstain. But those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. With that, we now have the next item, Madam Clerk, which I think is our first business item. And I'm going to call on Robert Danglin and Aya Danglin, because you also wish to speak on item 55C, which is going to be part of our business calendar. But you had other items. So just come on up, and you can speak on anything and everything that you want. You had 55C, 20A, 22B, 20A, 25E, and 22A. Please go ahead, Aya.
Good evening, Mayor Polito, and Santa Ana City Council members. My name is Aya Danglin. Thank you for your generous decision to give me, for all speeches, only three minutes. But even though I oppose the limitation of my speech, I respect your decision. My attendance, when law and constitution are violated, then at least the right of three speech, even for three minutes, it's something than nothing. My attendance of this meeting is for only reason to represent my tortured innocence on Nate and the voiceless individual and their families who otherwise should not be heard. No city, county can afford the price tag in participation in extermination of innocent people. The price of moral is too high. I do not, I do not know what the incentive or rate of the bribes, Orange County Regional Center, to pay to perform the show in the court with Judges Lee Hubbard, Marbury, and public defender more fit to John Falden than public offender. But obviously, they have been paid well to allow the respect of the court for money. I want to ask on the question of police report, because that was only my hope, because Nate kept in isolation, then the police report, this is a hope they can bring something to judge. The police report, unfortunately tempered. For example, police case report 1531878 lost completely the original allegation that Nate had difficulties breathing because of the psychotropic drug that enforced on him by staff. They chocking him, strangled. Everything was missing, like nothing happened. The officer interviewed him for nearly 30 minutes and agreed that everything what we reported was accurate, and the same with other report. So I'm coming to the judge, and because he is... other reports. So I'm coming to the judge. And because he is in isolation, nobody can visit him. And I have nothing to prove, because everything is covered up. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, your son, please, Robert, come on down.
Hello, Honorable City Council. This is Robert Teglin, brother Nate Teglin. My brother Nate Teglin has been illegally confined in the nine zero three South Herman Group home, in which he's been illegally placed there in violation of the court decision to release him to the family. And then one year and seven months later, the court made an illegal decision to remove conservatorship, which is completely illegal, as they know full well. And now Judge Mobley is refusing to grant temporary conservatorship and suspend their conservatorship, despite the fact that his, I mean, the choking and the abuse that he's been alleging, and that there's proof. Believe me, the police officers don't even know what proof we have, that it's... If they don't want to write their reports, then we can provide the proof without them. Police officers are supposed to do their job of at least writing what victim is alleging. Maybe they can say the victim is lying, but at least they should write it. Instead, the police officers conceal all the reports. So if they don't want to do it, if they want to cover up for the regional center, then I'll be able to provide the judge with other proof. No need for them to do that. I just... The issue is that you have a crime going on of, most importantly, that he's on pharmaceutical drugs, two thousand milligrams of Depakod and Zyprexa drugs that are obviously... that are forbidden to be placed on any individual particularly for such an extended period of time and causing seizures and so forth. And so, at least if the most, I would say the biggest criminals is the judge, the Judge Mobley, who is refusing to suspend the conservatorship. That would be a big help, because once he's suspended, then, very simple, then he can be at least removed from the abusive environment for now. And that's not possible until the judge can suspend it, although eventually she should suspend it, or she should be at least reported to the bar. So my point is that hopefully, you can have a way in which, well, the police officer should at least write on the report what the client is alleging. That would be very helpful in order to at least be a little bit more honest than just basically deleting the entire report and having no report of any abuse and no alleging of any abuse after somebody calls. And certainly, the paramedics are not going to take him. So the only hope is that the police officer, who has the authority and the badge to enter the home and to do it, they're going to at least report what the client is alleging. The paramedics are not going to do their job. That's already full known well, because before the paramedics were called, and they called the police instead to chase out the family. So they don't want to do their job. So it's going to have to be done in another way. But at least the police can, do have the authority and the right to write a report. So reports are very good for contributing to a faster release and saving his life. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, now, Madam Clerk, I'm going to go on to item fifty-five A. Okay, this item, I would entertain a motion. It's relocation plan for Bristol Street Phase Three A improvements between Civic Center and Washington Avenue. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly would comment. Just for the record, on the agenda, there was no attachment to this relocation plan. And I'm not sure for fifty-five B, there is a relocation plan document attached, but not for fifty-five A. And so for the record that we have here online, it's not attached.
Let me ask a question of staff. Because it wasn't attached, and I think it's a fair question, would a two-week continuance be in order, so we can see the plan?
I don't know if... What I have downloaded is... Does show a...
You do have an attachment?
I do on my end. I don't know if it's...
I have no attachment. So I don't know what the...
I can see the attachment. I'll check it online.
You do not have it?
I don't have it.
I have fifty-five A.
Right?
So Reyna doesn't have it. Martinez doesn't. B, they do, but A, they don't.
I have it.
Councilor Mes... You have it on fifty-five A?
So some people have it, some people don't.
Yeah, I don't think I do either.
So Mayor Protem does it. Look, because some people do and some people don't, if there's no harm in continuing, I would prefer to continue it.
I'll move for continuance.
Not attached online. All right, so let's continue for two weeks, and that way everybody can have it. Is there... We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, on fifty-five B, I think there it is attached.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, I reviewed the relocation plan, and I know as we were reviewing, you know, there... I have a question for staff. Based on this relocation plan, up to how many properties will that be? And based on my previous memory, I think it's nineteen to twenty, which will be mixed residential and commercial?
Thank you, Councilmember. I asked Jason here to give you detailed information.
Okay, the expert, Jason, yes.
Okay, for Phase Four. For non-residential impacts, there are thirteen businesses and one billboard. And for residential, there are thirteen single-family residence dwellings and one mixed-use residential commercial dwelling.
And I only ask that as, you know, Jason and staff, you know, just over the period of twenty-plus years on Bristol and the acquisitions, and my previous comments about the equity. Here we are again, going on this fourth phase, where we're possibly going to be impacting thirteen businesses, thirteen single residential homes, people being displaced. I've talked about this. So I'm not going to go over and over, you know, my comments, but I just want to state for the record and to my colleagues that, you know, as we move forward in this direction, we all know that residents are going to be coming here, business owners, and wanting to make sure that we have an equitable process, that as we move forward with relocation, that, you know, we treat people with respect, and we're making sure that we're working with everyone. I can, you know, I continue to be disappointed in the process. And I know you all have made the attempts to wanting to communicate with everyone. And I just think we could do things better. And so I'm just wanting to state to my colleagues this time around, this is pretty significant. Thirteen businesses, one billboard, and thirteen single-family homes will be impacted. And I, you know, as I mentioned in my comments when, you know, in the past, I just can't be supportive of moving forward. This is really going just to impact a lot of people. And I understand why we're doing this, and this plan has been in place for quite some time. But just how we've dealt with this in the past, I just don't have the confidence that we're going to do this right, and we're going to have hundreds of people, you know, again, continuing to come to our chambers, indicating that the process wasn't equitable. And, you know, I'm already starting to get phone calls, you know, there are concerns of residents, you know, when we buy their properties, where are they going to go, they're going to get displaced, you know, prices are already high on and so forth. So I'm not going to continue to just, you know, talk about this, because I have in the past. And so I can't support this. And so I just want to state that for the record, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We kind of voted on other aspects earlier. What's the pleasure of the council?
I do have questions for...
Please go ahead.
I noticed that, again, I did have the report for fifty-five A, as well as fifty-five B, noticing that it's... We have two sections, North Bristol, South Bristol. North Bristol, we're looking at Overland Pacific, which has been, I think, I believe that's the name of the recommended...
Correct.
Agency, right, whom we've used in the past numerous projects. Epic Land Solutions is who's being recommended for South Bristol, right? Have we used the second, the Epic Land Solutions, which is being recommended for fifty-five, on fifty-five B, south part of South Bristol? Have we used them before? Why the two different firms?
We would like to engage in all the experts that are available in the field. We don't want one single company to be responsible for all the projects that where we... It's a very sensitive issue. There's really several major companies that do this work. We have never used Epic in Santa Ana, but they do do projects for OCTA and lots of agencies in the LA area. So based on their qualifications, when we procured, we procured two companies. We knew this was a big effort, too. And so allocating a single company to all, to these two phases, that would have been a huge effort. So we wanted to split up that effort as well.
I think that's a good call. Actually, I'm glad to see that we do have two different firms that we're going to be potentially entering into agreement with. There's a certain amount of accountability, I think, along, you know, through this process, when we do have a couple of different firms. To Councilwoman Martinez's point, we... It's very sensitive when you get to a place where you're essentially having to sit down with somebody and telling them, you know, you're going to have to move, because for the public benefit, public good, we're going to need to widen this thoroughfare this right away. And we are going to help you through the process, but ultimately, you're no longer going to be able to continue living or operating your business at this location. We have used the other firm, as I mentioned, numerous times over the last number of years. And whether it's... We've had mixed feedback from resident members of the community. One of the main things is I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to hold these firms accountable in how they negotiate and all. At the end of the day, they're representing the city and customer service, and approaching our residents, approaching the local businesses in a way that's very, that's dignified, that is respectful, that is fair, is very important. Because, again, at the end of the day, they represent this council, they represent the city. So I want to make sure, and that's part of the reason why I think, I was very glad to see that we have two firms out there. It sends the message that we're not, there isn't one that is going to automatically get the contract, and that we're not going to be watching what they do. So I think that, again, that raises the level of accountability. But I do want to, did want to make comment to ask staff to monitor this very closely, because, again, we have had some feedback where, whether it be Warner, or North Bristol, or other parts of town, where there potentially have been some, either insensitivities, or when members of the community are being approached. And how much of that not having been in the conversation there, again, it's a sensitive issue, and so it's difficult to tell, you know, the accuracy on the reports that we get. But I do want to make sure that we are very clear to these contractors, again, assuming that at least Epic Land gets, assuming we move forward with them tonight, that there is a high standard and a high expectation that they treat our community well, and that we will be taking their feedback, our community's feedback, very seriously when it comes to their contract going forward. Mr. Public Works Director, I think you want to comment?
Thank you, Councilmember. We had that in mind when we went through a rigorous process of selecting this contractor for our on-call list. Every time we have relocations like this, as you mentioned, we will not, in my experience, we will not have everybody satisfied. But we, there is, we think we're making progress, and there's always room for improvement. And we're watching and looking at this process very carefully. It has been city managers' priority also, to make sure, as you said, we're taking care of this transition as painlessly as possible and equitable as possible. And we will watch that, and then we make corrections if we see something that is not working.
Thank you for that being responsive. And I do ask that, assuming this goes forward, that you check in on a very, on a regular basis and provide us some counsel, some just regular updates, input as well. Because, again, when we go out there in the community, community meetings such, we do hear about these interactions. And the last thing we want is to hear that people are not being treated in a respectful, dignified, courteous manner and being dealt with fairly. So...
Is that a motion?
With that comment and with that understanding, I will be moving the item.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no and one absent, Councilmember. So with that, item fifty-five C, this is accepting the donation of fitness equipment for the Santa Police Department's Fitness Center. We have a motion.
Second.
It's from the Police Officers Association. We have a motion a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item sixty-five A, we have two speakers, Kimberly Terrazas and Rick Niedermeyer. Kimberly, if you can please step forward.
Hello, good evening. This is kind of a little stressful. I've never done this before. But I am a property manager for the Church Trinity Cristal Rey Lutheran Church on the corner of Broadway and Cubbin. And I received a call this evening, and basically from my daughter, who's a youth director there. And she applied to, in the lottery, to get the firework booth back this year. And we did get it, which is nice. But now we are being told that there's a possibility that there's going to be a fee imposed of thirteen hundred dollars for possible sales of fireworks. Well, the main reason that we do it is to help out children in our community that are less fortunate. We use those monies to fund programs that we don't have. Churches are struggling in our area. I don't know if you know that, but they are. And that's what brought me here this evening. And I just basically wanted you guys to really realize what impact that's going to have on us. We're going to work harder to make more money to use for these programs. So one of the things that I heard when I came in earlier today was a lot of great things that the churches are doing, and a lot of different things that are going on because of what, you know, they believe in, what they stand up for, what they believe in, and that's why I'm here. So when you guys vote, know what you're impacting, because it's going to affect our kids. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Rick, please.
Sorry, I just had to do that. Good evening, once again. I'm here to talk about sixty-five A. Safe and sane fireworks are being discussed and scrutinized, because there's a major increase in illegal fireworks in the city last year. There was an increase in fireworks everywhere, but cities that don't enforce the laws on the books with heavy fines for illegal fireworks where the cities had the most activity. I question, how many citations for illegal fireworks were issued in the city of Santa Ana, and how much were each fines? I know on the books, it's a hundred dollars per fine. If I'm selling fifty thousand dollars worth of fireworks, I'll take the hundred dollar fine. Because if I sold that, then it makes sense, okay? It's not saying I would do it, but it makes sense. Are the citations given out the illegal fireworks used more costly than all the permits nonprofit groups pay for the city and the fire licensing for the week of the sales? So if there's no safe and sane fireworks in the city of Santa Ana, does that mean the city would not need to hire the pre-holiday preparation and have the extra police on duty, because the safe and sane aren't being sold in the city? I think not. I think you're still going to have illegal fireworks going off left and right, and crazily. How do we fix that? Increase the fines. Garden Grove has a thousand dollar fine per citation. They enforce it. It's real important that you have to enforce this stuff to help make it go away. If you say, well, at the last meeting, I have notes that says, we drove up on a guy shooting off illegal fireworks, and they took off running. Well, if you were in the park dealing drugs and you took off running, they'd chase you. Okay? I just, they're still, we need to figure this out. The other thing is, I already have a business license in the city of Santa Ana. Now the city requires me to have a firework business license, which increases my fees that I have to pay to the city. And I pay two hundred and forty-one dollars in additional fees, even though I have a business license in the city of Santa Ana. I'm one of those twenty-eight thousand businesses. Now I have two licenses for doing the same thing. Our firework stand costs us a hundred dollars. The electrical permit, if we're going to have lights in the firework stands so we can see at night, another ninety bucks. The county fire inspection is another hundred and eighty-three dollars for them to walk in one door and out the other, saying, hey, it's a firework stand. The state fire marshal license, a fifty dollars. These aren't fees that we can get away with. We have to pay these. So we're looking at six hundred and sixty-three dollars of our profits before we even open the doors that we have to pay, plus the rental of the property that we have, whatever state, wherever we may be. Our rent is five thousand dollars for the four days. So you're looking at fifty, six hundred dollars before we ever open the doors. We're trying to improve the quality of life for these kids in the city of Santa Ana by providing them an alternative to being out in the streets, playing soccer and... providing them an alternative to being out in the streets, playing soccer, in our case. Other nonprofits do it for the same reason, but for different, for different ideals. I, I think you really need to look at this. The $1,300 doesn't work. We're already paying a lot and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with that, let me bring in counsel for discussion and consideration. Councilor Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, because it's under a report. Is there recordable action? Is there an, it says recommended action in these two steps, so just a little confused how it says it's under, is it a report for us to review? Or are we asking today to provide a vote on these two suggestions or options below?
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's a option, one of the two options is either keep the current situation and move forward as is, or direct staff to develop a regulatory program, come back with an ordinance, if you so please. And the law department will do that at the next meeting based on direction today.
Great, thank you. And I see the gentleman from TNT Fireworks in the audience. And, you know, I know we had great discussion and dialogue a month or so about this issue and it's not always an easy one. And I know the suggestion was brought up by a couple of my colleagues, in particular one that is not here today, Councilman Tina Hedo, about the regulatory fee. And so, you know, the direction that we take, do we take status quo or do we conduct, you know, you know, some kind of regulatory fee and what does that cost? And so I think I made my position very clearly. I would like to hear from my colleagues and unfortunately, the member that brought this issue up about the regulatory fee is not here today. And so I, I have not been in communication with anyone after this, this last meeting. And so I appreciate staff bringing these two options because I do agree that we need to make some kind of decision. Fourth of July is right around the corner. And, you know, we need to make some decision. Are we going to do no policy change and, and not pursue a regulatory fee? I saw on the report what the cost is, is a tune of over 100, $115,000. And so, you know, for the services for our, our public safety. And so, Mr. City Manager, if we were to go status quo and not pursue a regulatory fee, does the city have that in its budget currently in our police department's budget to continue to operate safe, the safe and sane fireworks, plus the issues that we've had in the past as it pertains to fireworks, to the illegal activity?
I, I, I'll, I'll answer the question by, we need to go, have the police department respond to calls for service, do the outreach. And of course, that will be based on our current budget. In this case, Councilwoman, if we had the $100,000 to the regulatory fee, we would recover our costs and that would give us a greater ability to use the police in other areas because we are going to have a lot of people in overtime, for example. But, so this is a case of, we have the cost, we have no revenue to offset it. If we had the regulatory fee, we would be able to do that. But the, as you know, we would still have to go out there this year and deal with these issues and we have no regulatory fee to recover the cost.
Okay. Great. That answers, you know, you, you, my question. And so I'd like to hear from the rest of my colleagues and the direction that, you know, we all should take. And it's, it's, it's not an easy one and I, and I think, just say hypothetically, Mr. City Manager, if we were to go with option one, no policy change, because the other option was taken away from us where I was supportive of. And that was to take it to the voters. That didn't make it up on here. We're just, they're still discussing the regulatory fee. And I made that very clear with everyone the last time. That was my option. And so now that these two options are before us, you know, do we, are we still have the option to add something else? And, and that's my third question. But just knowing hypothetically, just saying that the city council decides to go with option one and we do status quo, we don't do anything, we don't do any regulatory fee, what does that mean the next, the, the, the following years? You know, are we still, are we still going to study this? Are we going to consider possibly going to the voters? Are we going, still going to consider and do a study for this regulatory fee? Are we going to talk to the faith-based community and the nonprofits and the, the supplier, TNT Fireworks? I, I guess I, I, I'm asking all these questions because this issue is not going to go away. So just, as I said, hypothetically, the council goes with option one, that means we do status quo, everything back to the way it is and we just leave it alone. And then two, we're going to go ahead and, and implement this regulatory fee. What are the impacts to the faith-based community, you know, to the nonprofit organizations? Do they lose, you know, funding? Or does the city have the funding available to supplement, you know, you know, the police department to continue to do its job? Or three, do we just say, "Hey, you know, we're going to be status quo now and we're going to take it to the voters to decide." And in there, we put some regulatory fee and we let the voters decide. And so that is particularly my option. I don't, I'd love to hear from my colleagues where they're at on one and two, but my option's not on here. I'm still willing to go with option three, putting language in there about a regulatory fee. So that's where I stand at this moment. Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Let me go to Councilor, Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, both members of the public who came and spoke and addressed the council and Councilwoman Martinez for her comments. We have had a discussion various times on the Public Safety Neighborhood Improvement Committee with regard to the issue of fireworks and we had quite an extensive dialogue here a couple of meetings back. And that's where the whole idea of regulatory fee came up. Ultimately, the direction, what I heard, and, and, you know, the colleagues can speak to it, but, but what I heard is that we, this year, didn't want to move in the direction of abandoning the safe and sane fireworks. And one of the main reasons for the, the points that the speakers came and addressed us and, and made comment on, there are a lot of positive programs that the nonprofits provide for our community. However, there is, we also recognize that status quo isn't quite going to work either. We all, I think, for the most part, recognized it last year, Fourth of July, Fourth of July weekend. It was, there was a lot of negative impact that the illegal fireworks brought to, brought to, to our community. So what we, the discussion from last week is we need to do something. When it comes to addressing whether we're going to go to the voters, whether we're going to consider a ban, or what our longer-term solution is going to be, the discussion is let's bring that up after, let's bring that back to discussion as a council after the July Fourth weekend. But when it comes to the regulatory fee, part of what we, we, my, my, what I heard and my recommendation tonight would be, is that the regulatory fee is something that we should look at, direct staff to work on that. But the, the comment was that it wouldn't necessarily, the idea is not for it to, to impact the, the programs, the, the nonprofits, the booster clubs, the, the sports programs. And, and one of the things that I think is important to point out is that what I'm seeing here as far as the total estimated cost, the way it's broken out, it's, it's potentially suggesting that all of the costs, which we have been accustomed to, which has been part of doing business in town, has been something that is, has been within budget, part of that, the, the fees from the booths provide for some of those and some of it has just been general expense that we've been accustomed to. The way, the way I'm seeing it, it's almost, the, the math here is almost suggesting that we move all of that cost over into, to these new fees, which I don't think it really is, is necessarily what council was suggesting we do. There are the, the providers of the safe and sane, TNT, Phantom, perhaps others. What my recommendation, motion tonight, is going to be that we look at a, at a regulatory fee, but that in part of the process, that staff look at not just passing it all on to the, to the, to the nonprofits, to the booths out there, but is looking at the, the industry. If industry's not willing to step up and absorb and we're not able to provide enhanced education, enhanced enforcement with the goal of reducing the negative impact of the legal fireworks, then we, when we come back after the Fourth of July, then, you know, maybe there isn't a place for the, for the industry in town and we do go the route of, of considering everything, including ban. But ultimately, regulatory fee, looking at not having it all be completely absorbed by the, by the community organizations out there. And with the purpose of not just covering costs that we've been accustomed to, but actually providing enhancement in the area of education and enforcement. So my, my recommendation would be that we, given what I just explained, is that we go with option two and have staff study a regulatory fee.
Is there a motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Well, I, I have a couple of questions before, yeah. Yeah. First of all, the fines, $100, I thought the Public Safety Committee had, not, yeah, Public Safety Committee had looked at this last year, if I remember correctly, and they were increased, correct?
Do you know, Chief, if the fines were increased for fireworks? Illegal fireworks?
No, I think it was increased, but I don't know if it's still a big difference.
So it is $100 for the fines?
I, I, we'll, we'll get back to you on that. I don't want to give you a number that's not accurate.
Because if it is-
But we'll, we'll find out, Councilwoman, and let you know exactly as part of the study that is being done.
Okay. And also, is it still time for us to put it on the ballot if we decided to go ahead and support Councilmember Benavides, but add that we're going to potentially send it out to the voters? Just because I know this is an issue that's very, for the communities divided and I think that would be a good option for us as well.
The, at the last meeting, Councilwoman, Mayor, members of the council, there was a discussion about the ballot initiative. One of the things we emphasized that once you go to the ballot, you've got to go back to the ballot to make changes.
Change it, okay.
So the way I understood the motion by Councilman Benavides was to come back with a regulatory fee, but not necessarily recommend a ballot initiative.
Okay. Thank you.
We will, we will look at the fines, too.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, and actually speaking about the fines, if, if, if we can increase that to the max and it sounds like there's a couple of other local cities to 1,000, I would definitely strongly urge us to move in that direction. And we're talking about additional dollars in regulatory fees. Ultimately, we want to get rid of all the illegals. And no matter how much we put cost onto the regular nonprofits that are selling safe and sane, that's not going to have an effect on the illegal ones. If we put a fine, the highest fine that we possibly can, I think that would do, move in that direction. Also, I think if, if we might be able to specifically earmark a group of police officers for enforcement. I know that, that we're, we're very short-staffed to be able to do something like that. At the same time, I do know that we have a team that works on cold cases. And again, potentially working on somebody that's getting hurt today and somebody that was gotten hurt about 20, 30 years ago. Not that they don't deserve assistance and help, but, but immediately we have issues and concerns right now that might be able to be addressed with this. I think a combination of moving in that direction truly would, would, would support the overall goal of helping out our nonprofits, helping out our young people. And I don't think we should put the additional cost on them. They're actually doing some of the heavy lifting for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mayor Protown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know that we had a lot of people come to speak to us and send us written correspondence that were opposed to fireworks altogether. So let's not forget about those folks either. We have to consider everybody that spoke, everybody that's written us and everybody that's not here that's impacted. But I think the prevailing thought here was how do we help? How do we try to solve this problem? So I'm supportive of looking at what that fee would be, having it borne not solely by the booth operators and the nonprofits, but being borne by the industry as well. I just want to make sure that as we have this conversation after July Fourth, can we ensure that we continue to talk about putting it on the ballot for November? I understand that the fee or the cost for that is, I wouldn't say it's nominal, but it's not as expensive if it were a freestanding matter. There's going to be some other issues on that ballot, so I'm sure we can piggyback on that, but-
When's the deadline for that, Maria?
The deadline, I believe, is August 6th to be able to place it on the, on the election.
So we have about maybe a month and, you know, maybe we can do some preliminary work in advance if we have to, if we, you know, consider doing it for November of this year. But I just don't want that option to go away because it's important. I think, again, I, I agree with the Councilwoman. I don't think this issue is going to just disappear, even with the fee. And the whole idea is just to resolve the problem, is, you know, to resolve the, the secondary impacts, not just from the legal, but for the, I like to call them the, the unpermitted fireworks. So let's, let's look at that and I just want to include that in the discussion.
All right. So right now, I have a motion by Councilor Benavides, which actually says to look further at option two with a modification, that is not to go after the organizations, but try to see if the majority of it can be borne by the industry. Do you have a comment, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to emphasize, I believe that council meeting would be July 5th because we, I think we're dark the second week in July. So we would ask that you make the motion.
Well, and, you know, the other thing I mentioned was that if we need to, we could call a special meeting. And I would prefer we look at it, not rush into it. Let's have some time. If we need it, we'll do it. So with that, we have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, can you just clarify?
Yes.
Because you were, I didn't, you know, specifically hear your points.
The, the, the motion is that-
Because my points were not included.
Correct.
So, okay.
Correct. Your points are not included.
No, but, but not in David's motion.
Correct.
But, but we are going to look at potentially including it on the ballot.
And that'll be after.
After.
But it's not this motion today.
After July 4th?
Please clarify the motion.
So the, the motion is to move forward with option two, which is to direct staff to look at creating regulatory fee, but to, to qualify it so that it's not just passed on to the, to the nonprofits. So looking at options, whether it be shared or absorbed by the, by the industry. That's the motion. Going back to the previous meeting, we directed staff to have, agendize this discussion after the July Fourth holiday so that we can then look at the impacts of enhanced education, enforcement and such, to see what action we want to go, we want to take going forward.
Yeah, Danny.
Potentially considering ballot measure or, or other options. And then we do have that window of about, you know, a month to decide if we want to go ahead and move forward with that.
Mayor Protown?
So just for clarification, part of that motion is to include the conversation of it being potentially a ballot measure.
Right, yeah. It's, that's not off the table. That, that definitely is on the table. And I think to, to your point, Councilman Sarmiento, doing some of the preliminary work in preparation to the July meeting.
Further discussion. Further discussion. All right, those in favor, please.
Mr. Mayor, you're going too fast. And so just, I just, and I thank Councilman Benavides for clarifying that. So I just want to be clear. So what we're doing here today is, because I think that the audience is probably a little like, what's going on here? What we're doing today is we're staying status quo for this Fourth of July. Status quo, we're not doing-
Correct.
-possibly anything, just status quo. PD is going to take, but what we're asking for tonight is for our staff to conduct some form of, of assessment to implement a regulatory fee and assuring that, you know, we look at, you know, who is going to be responsible for that fee? Is it going to be the industry or are we going to do a hybrid of the two? And we are going to come back to observe, to, to decide if we also may go to the voters when this information comes before us, if it's palatable, if it's, it's something that, you know, we're willing to support, whatever that fee may be, to the, to the industry or to the, to, to the participants who get these firework stands.
Right.
Is that a, a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just, just wanting to be clear to, to them so that they know that they're going to continue to go out there and do what they need to do and go get their permits. Nothing, it's all status quo. Staff is going to come back to us before July with an assessment of this, of this potential regulatory fee and an option of possibly going to the voters.
The, the one thing that I do, and you bring up a good point, my, my understanding is that the regulatory fee discussion, that isn't necessarily going to be waiting until after July, but looking at something, and this would be my request, that staff actually look to bring us something before the, the July Fourth, our Independence Day holiday so that we could potentially include that. Because, again, at the end of the day, what we want to be, what, what we need to see is enhanced education and, and enforcement. Something that would be able to help bring some remedy to what we have had in the last few years, including last year in particular.
So are you talking, we possibly may impose this fee this Fourth of July?
That's, that's a question- That's a question that I would have for staff, as to whether that's something we would be able to, whether we have enough time to be able to do that, impose that.
So I was just under the impression, because time is of essence, we're in May already, and if staff doesn't come to us within the next three weeks, it's gonna literally be impossible, because we're already gonna be going out there to them.
That's what I want to-
Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
I think we're, if we don't have a regulatory fee right now, we had a proposal, it's not gonna pass, because there's a feeling that we should also include the industry in the fee, and we're asking to research that. That'll probably take two weeks, maybe the June meeting, and then isn't there like notices? And so I don't know how we get to have a regulatory fee before July 4th. I think it's more realistic to prepare it and come back on the 5th for the following year as part of that discussion.
To the council's timing concerns, for any action to be effected or implemented for this Fourth of July, say in the form of a regulatory impact fee, that would very likely have to take the form of an urgency ordinance for the very next meeting that would go into effect immediately. Any other type of ordinance would have a 30-day, a 30-day waiting period, obviously. So for any, if the council ultimately directed that a regulatory impact fee be assessed for this Fourth of July, again, that would likely take the form of an urgency ordinance at the May 17th meeting, for that to take effect.
Mayor? Quick question.
Go ahead.
What about the fines? Are we still in time to increase the fines for this year?
You would be able to do that with, but no later than the May 17th meeting.
Okay, then if we can do that and look at our fines, so that we can at least increase the fines for this Fourth of July, that would be great.
I think that we'd have to study the issue of whether we could do that definitively. Staff could probably come back to that, as to whether the May 17th date would even be permitted for that, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, look, I'm not sure that any motion right now is gonna be of any significance as it relates to this Fourth of July. I really don't see that.
Because of the timing.
Yeah, because of the timing. So I think it's really up to us as councilmembers, if we choose to, to try to talk to the industry, you know, talk to the nonprofits, tell them to educate as many folks as they can, and also maybe we can make some noise about increased penalties, so at least the word is out there that we intend to increase penalties. And maybe some people will, you know, think twice about, you know, discharging legal fireworks, knowing that there could be some penalties around the horizon. So at this point, I'm not certain what a relevant motion is.
Well, I think we could still move forward with the motion that's on the table that's been seconded, and that doesn't necessarily change. The only thing that I would ask staff to do, I mean, you're hearing, council, we're having discussion, there is a sense of urgency. I think if there's anything that, you go back, study, look at both fees and fines, and if there is something that you think is, can be brought forth to us on May 17th for us to consider, that you go ahead and bring that forward. The main thing is that, you know, we want to be able to see, do something, and address some of these concerns that have been brought before us, and that's really on staff to be able to provide the tools to be able to address the concerns that the council has as a result of what the community has brought.
And I think the motion would be to come back with a regulatory fee structure, listening to the comments made, and also ask us to increase the fine as soon as possible, and hopefully maybe we can do that on the 17th, we'll check with law.
Okay.
All right, so do you amend your motion to that?
I do. I amend my motion to the friendly amendment by the City Manager.
You got it.
Second.
All right, with that, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Well, look, Romans a no, and let's note that. Also, I want to just state for the record, I'm an aye, but I'm an aye because I don't want to see anything change. I believe that as we get more information, maybe we can do the regulatory, maybe we can do the increased fines, maybe we can leave the nonprofits alone and allow Safe and Same fireworks, you know, forevermore.
And possibly take it to the voters this November.
Possibly take it, possibly not.
Yes.
Possibly not.
Well, you gotta, you gotta, that's a discussion that we still need to have.
Correct, because I don't think I'm there. I just want to state that for the record. So with that, let's go on to the next item. Seventy-five A. This is time and place for a public hearing authorizing condemnation of real property on North Bristol Street. Do we need a staff presentation? If not, I would bring it back to council for consideration. Do I have a motion?
Industry, absolutely. Absolutely. Industry, okay.
On seventy-five A. This time and place for a public hearing, see no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration. Item seventy-five A.
Can staff, looking at, and we've been discussing several properties here along North Bristol with regard to the widening, and I'm trying to ensure that I am zeroing in on the correct property. Okay, so this is the one on the northeast, the furthest northeast property adjacent to the parking lot at the corner of 17th and Bristol, correct? Okay, so we're able to, okay, I'll move the item.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
One no, motion carries, seventy-five B. This is a continued public hearing, adopting the proactive rental enforcement program, PREP ordinance in Chapter Eight of the strategic plan. We have two speakers, Lou Benrose from the Apartment Association, and also Nicholas Dunlap, also from the Apartment Association of Orange County. Lou, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Santa Ana City Council. On behalf of the Apartment Association of Orange County, I'm here to speak to this agendized item. After having had the opportunity to meet directly with city staff to examine the varying positions and provide feedback from our association, we are very happy to have reached an agreement on the current items of concern, specifically the adjustments of the annual rental housing inspection per unit fee. With our full support, city staff recommends a $2 increase to the PREP inspection fee to include all city costs, as well the matter of future PREP adjustment fees being benchmarked to the Consumer Price Index were tabled until citywide comprehensive department fee studies are accomplished. We believe these changes are reasonable and necessary, and the Apartment Association of Orange County supports the staff recommendation, and we urge your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nicholas Dunlap. I'm volunteer president of the Apartment Association of Orange County. Countywide, we represent about 70,000 apartment units totaling about 3,000 members. The city of Santa Ana, we represent over 100 property owners and business owners, close to 10,000 units, and again, here to speak on behalf of and in support of the, you know, the PREP program and the recent changes to the $2 per unit fee. This is a program that we're very proud of, and a program that I could tell you personally and through partnership, we own approximately four buildings here in the city totaling 220 units, and we're a four-time gold seal recipient, and so it's a very good program, and it does wonders for the multifamily community here, and certainly the apartment industry here in the city. It's a program that I can also tell you through really nationwide involvement in our apartment industry, you know, it's the gold seal in Santa Ana, but it really is the gold standard for, you know, in terms of setting the standard for expectations of rental housing, and so thank you for your support and thank you for this program.
Thank you. With that, let me close the public hearing. Any more comment? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Questions from staff, Mayor.
We have a question. Okay, before we vote a question, go ahead.
I mentioned learning what the difference is between, there have been some modifications from staff as to, from last, what was proposed last time to tonight, and then I have a couple follow-up questions.
Staff last week had proposed a $4 increase and a CPI adjustment annually, and after meeting with the Apartment Association, we agreed to reduce our recommendation to $2 at this time, because the city is undertaking a citywide fee study, including all of the fees in PVA, in Planning and Building Agency, and among those, this fee will also be studied deeply and with a lot of background analysis to see if any further adjustments would be necessary. That'll be done within the next few months, so we don't think we're missing out a lot.
What was the reason for the proposed fee increase that was before us at the last meeting?
The reason for that was the actual cost to finance department to process the fee, and, you know, we had actually done that, but that cost analysis will also be done as part of the citywide fee analysis in a much more comprehensive way. We think we can get back to it.
And now, more for a broader question, the PREP program has been going for several years. What's the purpose behind the program ultimately?
The purpose is to maintain the higher standard of living in the apartment buildings and to make sure that the buildings and the units are maintained properly and that they meet our standards for tenants.
There are quite a few, we have quite a few multi-housing, you know, properties throughout the city. A number of those, particularly those that participate in PREP that are gold seal, you know, they're the responsible ones, right? The ones that, you know, probably will come and speak before us, the ones that know and have a handle on not only what measures the city is taking with regard to fees, but then also typically would have a handle on their properties and have oversight and might be the better-maintained properties. We have quite a few, though, within the city that are not the responsible owners, that are the absentee landlords, landlords, to put it nicely, more bluntly, the slumlords who are out there gouging our residents, particularly some of our more residents of least means, financial means, and are living in substandard conditions. So my question is, how does this, does the PREP and having this type of, if the goal is for this program to be able to ensure that we have quality housing, ultimately, what is our plan to be able to move more in that direction, particularly towards those that are not the responsible landlords?
We are looking at several options that we're going to bring, and in our general plan meetings with the community, actually, the very item that you just mentioned, the number of concerns that you just mentioned, are coming up from the tenants who are attending our general plan meetings, too. So we are going to, not only through this program and the fee study, come up with some options that we will discuss with the Apartment Association as well, to come up maybe with a sliding scale that, right now, the way that the program works, that the gold seal ones are exempt from the fee, and then the rest of them aren't paying the fee. Perhaps that's not the most comprehensive way to deal with these things. Perhaps we could take a look at the ones that are repeat offenders of the qualities that we could really take a look and see if they could be structured slightly differently, and then maybe figure out a way to, after discussing it with the members, to maybe not completely exempt the gold seal, but maybe reduce their fee, and then use the money in other ways to enhance our program in the problem areas, in the problem buildings. And that's one area. Another area that we're looking at is through the housing element. We think there are other aspects that we need to probably introduce for council in terms of policy to deal with the slumlords, and this may not be the only place we need to approach this. I think there are other places that we could present ideas for you.
Thank you, Officer Gani, for that. I do agree that there are very likely several tools that we need to have in our toolbox to be able to finally really get to the heart of some of these issues, the repeat offenders, as you put nicely. I would hope that we would proactively, you know, to use the term here in the title of this program, look at ways that we can have the tools, get some teeth to some of these policies to hold some of these folks accountable. These are the absentee landlords, slumlords, who are, who give the rental industry a bad name, the apartment associations, and also I would ask that the speakers and leaders who came and spoke before us today, that they would also be partners with us to help us come up with solutions, because ultimately, again, they put the black eye on the multi-housing and rental industry, and we have responsible landlords out there, but we have far too many in our city that are irresponsible. We need to hold them accountable, so that would be Planning and Building Code Enforcement, City Attorney's Office, and probably a multiple, you know, task force or approach on the part of the city, and hopefully in partnership with the industry, again, to be able to elevate the quality of living in our city. And so I do ask that, even if tonight, I will be supporting this item, that hopefully it's just one step towards a larger, more comprehensive effort that we'll be hearing back from.
You'll hear from, back from us, I promise.
Thank you.
The fee study, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, any more questions? Do we have a motion?
There's a motion.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, we're now on item seventy-five C. This time and place for a public hearing, which is a general plan amendment, an amendment application, negative deck, summary street vacation inclusionary housing agreement for First and Pacific Townhome Project at 1506 through 1548 West First Street. Applicant is the Olson Company. I know I was speaking to our Vice Mayor earlier, or Mayor Protem, and we maybe discussed a potential continuance, because you had some questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we received some written correspondence, I believe, that Madam Clerk circulated to the council from the Kennedy Commission on some issues that were raised, and I do, I would like to go ahead and see if the council would entertain a continuance for. I know that the 17th is going to be a very busy calendar, and we have a lot on the agenda. It's gonna be a little confusing. About 30 days going out to the 7th, I believe, is the next council meeting after that, but there are some issues here that I did find a little odd, and one of them I would point to, page five, paragraph two, where we identify this as being part of the housing element, and when we identified First Street as part of a target area within the housing element, it was confined to the area that was bordered by the 5 freeway to the east and Grand Avenue to the west. So that doesn't correspond to this site here, so we just need to talk about that, some other issues, I think, that are relevant, but I'd go ahead and make a motion to continue the matter till June 7th.
So 30 days, and Madam Clerk, if we can just do that, so we're properly noticing everything and all? So we'll just continue the whole thing, and I would encourage the applicant, if there's any questions or thoughts, you know, we're all available.
Thank you, Mayor. We just want to make sure that the director can make contact with all the council members till he can answer your questions, not tonight, but at during that time.
And I know there's a familiar face here. We haven't seen, how you doing, John? It's been a while since we've seen you.
John, go ahead.
Yes, appreciate the council's concerns. I think the concerns of the Kennedy Commission are very easily answered this evening. The one difficulty that this does present is in our purchase and sale agreement with the seller. If we are continued, we're gonna be in a position where we'll be out of contract and not be, and potentially lose the property. You know, we think that, we think the project's in good shape, that these issues raised by the Kennedy Commission are not issues at this time. Staff has already been looking into those problems and concerns, and I don't believe they are concerns at this point. I think staff is comfortable with that, and so I would ask the council's consideration of taking action on the item this evening.
John, can I ask you a quick question? I know this has been, this is being considered a pipeline project.
Yes.
This was approved over a year ago, so we're asking for a 30-day continuance because we have some issues that are important.
Right.
This isn't simply having to do with the concerns that were fairly broad by the Kennedy Commission, but they have to do with how profound we're gonna go on the AMI. I know you're going at 120% AMI. Under the prior who, we have a lot of discretion to see where we go. That's part of the conversation. That's a much deeper conversation that can't be addressed solely, you know, in one hearing. So I think it's to your benefit. We'd hate to lose the project for you. If you want to go two weeks, will that help you?
That would help. That would help tremendously.
Okay, let's go to the 17th, and I promise, I'll make myself available if you'd like to sit down and speak.
I would, I would, I really would, if that's-
All right, so the motion's amended to two weeks.
I'll amend my motion to May 17th.
So those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So with that, Madam Clerk, where are we?
Eighty-five A.
Eighty-five A. Mayor Protem Sarmiento, please, and Councilor Reina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the, well, where is Nabil? There he is, Nabil. Why don't you come on up, because I'm gonna ask a couple of questions of you, if you don't mind.
Also, if I may, Mayor Protem, we do have two speakers I was unaware of. Should we see them now?
Sure, let's do that.
All right, Andres Teran, please, come on forward. And also Diego Teran, please, come on forward. And also Diego Terran, please come on forward. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Pulido, council members, manager Cabasos. We're here on behalf of the, uh, item on the agenda regarding the desalination plant, uh, plant for the city of Huntington Beach. We consider that this is a favorable, uh, project for our city and for our county so we can be independent in water supply. Most of the water we get in the city comes from Northern California or the Colorado River and a lot of it just evaporates. That's a very inefficient way to get water for the city. And I consider that this project would be beneficial not only for residential people in the city, but also for businesses of Santana. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diego Andres Terran and I support the construction of the desalination plant in Huntington Beach because I believe that we, we should be able to get water that doesn't come from Northern California or the Colorado River and I think that would be good for our future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we found our, our new representative to the water district, so.
To, to both, the Metropolitan and the Orange County.
He can replace me anytime.
Both of them. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, uh, we have motion, a second?
Uh, sure. I, I just wanted to make some brief comments and, you know, before we go. This is to direct staff to present a resolution, I believe. The council member and I sat down with Nabeel Sabah who helped us understand the issues. I, I sat on the water district for a couple of years. I know, uh, Councilmember Reyna sits on it now. Simply put, I think Diego Terran put it as best as anybody else, this is for reliability. This is, um, you know, we're going into our fifth year of drought. This, uh, this thing really, um, this elnio that everybody was waiting for really didn't solve the problem. It may have put a Band-Aid on the, on the issue, but, um, we've got a much more profound problem than, than we believe in. And, uh, Councilmember Martinez represents us on the Metropolitan Water District. My only guidance in, in directing staff when they're drafting the resolution is that there's some issues that even the water district is having and I'll let, uh, the council members speak to it, but again, we are overdrafting the aquifer and the groundwater, so we're at a pretty critical point here. Um, and the two issues that have always been prevailing and have always been of concern to the coastal commission, which hasn't granted approval for this, is number one, the environmental impacts, um, of the desalination plant. And I think the technology's improved, so we don't, you know, we, they may be able to find a way where you don't damage the seawater life and, and try to do it in a way that, um, that's friendly and has nominal impacts to the environment, but the other one specific to Santa Ana is that we have a very cost-sensitive rate payer base here in the city. So I know that, um, what we're struggling with or what, what, um, the water district is struggling with right now is getting to that amount. So to the extent they can get as close to what we pay for met water, um, we know it's not going to be exact and we know that the, that the, that the lines are going to cross at some point where what we pay for the met water and what we pay for desalinated water will eventually meet, but we're talking about 10 or 15 years down the line. Between now and then, I would just recommend that if there's a way we can keep the language broad, um, I don't want this water in the event that we have to subsidize it, that it be for the benefit of just South County. If it could be injected into the groundwater where all of us can go ahead and, um, and draw from that, I think that would make a lot more sense. It's, it's a lot more equitable, um, but, um, I'll let my colleagues go ahead and decide, you know, that, but I would, you know, those are just my, uh, recommendations as you go through and draft the proposal for the council's consideration. Thank you. And I'll move the item based on that.
Thanks so very much, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Said it very, very well, uh, pretty much echoed the same sentiments. Uh, I said at day one, as soon as I got on the city council, that, that we need to be water-wise because we have some serious water issues. We truly do and to have something reliable where we can count on it, Orange County's only going to continue to grow. You saw a young man here speaking, advocating for his future and he's the one that's truly going to be benefiting, uh, in, in the long term. And so I'm, I'm excited to see such a young activist coming out and speaking such an important issue as far as water. So again, I think that the, the, the cost issue is a concern, is something that we do need to keep in consideration. Uh, at the end of the day though, we do need reliable water and I think this is the best course of action for us to go, so I'm full supportive of it. Thanks so very much.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor and, and, and council. I do believe that the motion, or excuse me, the eighty-five A is to adopt the resolution that's already been drafted by Mr. Saban and, and, and staff. So it's in here and it does address all those points that we just mentioned. So, um, to the extent that it's very broad in its language, it's just simply saying that we support a broader portfolio of water resources and, um, you know, not just relying on GWRS, not just relying on the groundwater or the metropolitan water that we purchase, but this being part of that portfolio. So we're, we're keeping it fairly broad, we're very supportive in principle. We just want to also withhold in the event that the cost structure is just, um, you know, beyond what we think is, um, is appropriate for us to pay. So is that your understanding, Mr. Saban? Very good. So with that, let me amend the motion to reflect that we're adopting the resolution as proposed by staff for the council's review.
Does the second reflect that?
Second.
Did you say yes?
Yeah.
Got it. So with that, um, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now we're going to recess to the housing authority. I would entertain a motion on items one through four. I would entertain a motion on items one through four for the housing authority.
Second.
Motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Uh, Madam Clerk, any public comments? Rick Anidermeyer, please. Followed by James Kendricks. Followed by Alex Vega. And then batting cleanup, Aya Tenglin.
I'm back.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to publicly thank the police department. Two weeks ago, on a Tuesday night, uh, at Daniel Soccer Complex, number four, uh, during the end of a match, one of the players from our Santa Ana under-19 boys team went down and stopped breathing. We called 911, little, they weren't sure where we were and another parent was on the line with them, talking to them and telling them a different address than where we really were. So we got that straightened out, but the police department was the first on the scene. Uh, three officers came, code three, license sirens. I got there, a school police officer came, which was surprising as well. So it just shows that the police department does a lot of good things in the city and they're blamed for a lot of bad things and I, I just think publicly we need to, I want to thank them on behalf of AYSO. They came, this, this child was taken to the hospital, found out that he was, uh, diabetic and he didn't know it. And he went to a coma, out on the field, he just dropped. And the, the police officers came out with their defibrillators and the, the school police, uh, they, they happened to be an EMT and, uh, they resuscitated him, brought him back and, uh, he's back, he hasn't been cleared to play, but he's back out watching the team and supporting the team right now. So it's kind of neat, it's a neat story, the, you know, here's so many things that the police department does, everything, you know, wrong or not exactly right. Well, this is something where they did exactly what they were trained to do and it, it saved a, a player's life. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Rick. James? And then Alex. Is Alex Vega still here? Why don't you come on forward if you're Alex? If not, Aya, you're next, why don't you come on, oh, you're already forward. And your son's right behind you, by the way. Go ahead, James.
Counsel members, being passed to you right now is a copy of the Santa Ana Municipal Coordinates for Tobacco License, the city of Santa Ana. Attached to it, you'll see a black tea bag. Black tea bag represents Boston Tea, Tea Party. And the reason why is excessive taxes or, or fees. After, uh, missing my, uh, payment of $652.24, by 20 days, our fine police department decided me a hundred dollar ticket. April's kind of tough when your business is down 60%. I just paid my bid money, my business license, the state board of legalization, and here I get this, uh, what I feel is excessive license. It's been 10 years old now. This license has been in effect. And my question is, there's no leadway. I went online, I went to other cities, state of California allows you, which is the board and council here, some about 10 years ago, passed this. It's for $635 for eight years and all of a sudden there's a 2% increase. That's not business friendly and there's no justification for a 2% increase. And I came in last, and I'm, I'm just a little disappointed. You know, nine years, this week, I've been open. And I'm struggling to keep my doors open. And the police officers came in, you're in violation. But right there, you'll see in broad daylight, it says, if you don't, if paid, if not paid by the 30th of the month, there's a penalty. My check was mailed into the city on the 28th, before the 30th. It's going to be tough, but you know what? Other cities, Burbank, 350 bucks a year for a tobacco license. Yolo County, $340. San Jose, $360. Why are we $652.24? It's excessive. And can you, any of you council members, Mayor, I think you're the only one that was there when it was passed, and I preached nine years ago, I thought it was excessive, but I've been going along with it. Now I'm protesting it. It needs, you guys need to look at it. Has there been any reports or studies done? Where the money's being spent? How, how it's being justified? I don't know. I mean, the money just goes into this fund. Where does it go? Has anyone ever addressed it to see where that money goes? It's, we're, we're talking a half a million dollars a year. How many, how many businesses in Santa Ana sell tobacco products? Quite a few. And I'm sorry that I'm late, but I just need to also say, the state of California right now, the, the state assembly just passed a bill to raise the smoking age to 21. For e-cigarettes, vapor cigarettes and all tobacco products. And there's also a bill in there to raise tobacco prices by $20 a carton. It's not, you know, we're being taxed out a bit, you know, it's just, it's only 40% of my business, what little bit I get. But anyway, I think this was excessive. If there's anything I, you guys can do to help me about the hundred dollar ticket I got, I'd appreciate it. I bet I just, uh, I think you really need to go back and look at how the city taxes the businesses. Because I'm a small business, Michelle, and you know that. We talked about small business, I'm one of that 28,000 that's trying to struggle to make it. So anyway, I appreciate whatever you can do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pulido and Santa Ana City Council members. My name is Elliot Tenglin. Uh, I am for my son here. I am his voice. I'm here for underprivileged and suppressed. I want to say that DDS, it's Department of Development Services in Sacramento and Orange County Regional Center in Santa Ana are the biggest sponsor of corruption and, and disorder of this city and county. Everyone is tired of hypocrisy, including social, social workers too and police officer, some of them are courageous, honest people. Thanks for them. They prepare a good report. Who hiding, who changing that? Why we, I coming to the court and they make a, a puppet show? This, the same, uh, corrupted judges as, uh, Lee Hubbard, the Felden, John Felden, he's coming, collecting good money plus I, I can imagine, uh, some, I don't know how many bribery and he's betraying his clients for regional center. The freedom is not free. It's very expensive. My family paid for the highest price for the speech I, I am here for torturing my innocent son and persecuting my family, the family of Holocaust survivors. It's, it's a price to pay. For Orange County Regional Center, financial fraud, corruption of judges, Lee Hubbard, Mobberly, uh, public defender, John Felden, corrupted, uh, public offices. And that's what I wanted to tell you, that please, I know you're honest people. You cannot tolerate it any longer. People here to, for your support. How many times my son will be tortured for money? Everything is money. When is a honesty time? Thank you for your time.
Robert?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Robert Tenglin, brother of Nate Tenglin. Um, my brother Nate Tenglin was illegally removed, kidnapped from his home, uh, three times, uh, once in San Diego and twice in Orange County by the same Irvine Police Department, um, who removed him from the same exact home and placed him outside of the home where every time he's placed outside of the home, he has seizures and extraparametal syndromes and they put him on, uh, psychotropic drugs. This time he's on two years of aziprexa, which is a very strong drug that's only for people with, it's supposed to be taken even in the most extreme circumstances, maybe one month or two months and he's been on it for two years and so forth. Anyway, um, he's been repeatedly assaulted and, uh, most importantly, right now, the danger to his life is the seizures and extraparametal syndrome, in which, syndrome in which he has, um, EPS and the paramedics refuse to, uh, bring him to the hospital to have him tested and they conceal all the, um, most importantly, they conceal all the medical records. The, the testimony, we have the testimony, it's, doesn't, we don't need Nate's, we have more than enough, two years of Nate's testimony. Uh, what, what's needed is to find out, uh, you need an EKG to find out, they don't want to give him any, they conceal all blood tests and so forth and the, the, um, the, the depakote is toxic to the liver, it's toxic to the pancreas, it could cause diabetes, it could cause all of these, um, very severe effects and when he's unconscious or having seizures, the staff, instead of, uh, taking him to the hospital, they just take video pictures of him and then they don't do anything. So the, the issue is you have a, um, sort of unfair dichotomy where the, a person is, if you're in your own home and, and you have, uh, you have a seizure and so forth and you're, you will get poison control, you'll be taken out of the home, you'll get your medical treatment you need and, uh, social services supposed to take the person out. Whereas where my, whereas my brother, who's in the 903 South Harmon Group Home, however, he's funded by the Regional Center of Orange County. Now you have a conflict of interest where now all of a sudden the police, well, they come, they do their, their research, but now you have an issue of, not the police, it's not their fault, and then we have enough testimony, we don't need them to write Nate's testimony, but you need somebody to test him with his, to test his blood tests. They will not allow any doctors to visit him, which has, they have no excuse to do so. So maybe the next time the police come, um, they can force the, well, they don't, can be arranged that, uh, doctors can come and test him and if they find out that he's, his blood has toxic levels of the depakote where he has, um, some damage in his liver and so forth and he's weight gain and, and, and having seizures and EPS and at least if they find that out, that can be documented in a, in a, in a report, in a medical report and then you can go to the judge and say he has, he's in an emergency.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, Ponya, Porcha Peña, please, sorry, and then Madeline Spencer after, uh, Porcha, please. Madeline, why don't you come to the front because after three minutes, you'll be up. Thank you.
All right. Well, saludos, Mr. Mayor, council members, our city manager and staff. Um, I'm, uh, here representing the Arts and Culture Commission to give you a little update. We're about halfway through our arts master plan and thank you so much for supporting that and funding it. Uh, we've, uh, received about 400, uh, online, well, surveys from across the city, uh, telling us in Spanish and English what our constituents want here in Santa Ana to see in their arts and culture, uh, lives. We've also interviewed about 400 people on top of that, in-person and focus groups and community meetings all across the city. And so now that we're at the halfway point, we've got a draft. And, and we're, and we're missing a very important element, and that element is you. So if you haven't spoken to our consultants, please get with Jorge, Jorge, raise your hand. Our fabulous here, you know, city staffer who is, you know, adminning our commission. He'd be happy to set up a meeting with our consultants, that they can speak to each and every one of our council members. Our consultants have expressed concern, that they do want to speak to every single one of you, because all six words, it's really important, we get that input so that we can have the most accurate arts master plan possible. And then also, as we continue to grow and thrive as an arts and culture center, I wanted to invite you all to the observatory this Friday, May 6th, for their Cinco de Mayo Show, Los Lobos. As some of you may know, they recorded their new album, Gates of Gold, here in the city of gold, over in Ward 6, which I represent. And, and they will be playing their annual Cinco de Mayo concert, which has been for 20 years in Los Angeles. And they weren't feeling the onda there, they loved their experience in Santa Ana, recording an album here. They have changed their annual Cinco de Mayo concert to be here in Santa Ana. This is the first time it's gonna happen. There's going to be a proclamation onstage with your colleague, council member, Tina Jero. So please come and join us. Come and join the proclamation. We'll have some photos and fun video to share with you at the next council meeting. But I just wanted to let you all know, and for the public out there, buy your tickets, because it will sell out. We've got X and the Blasters also on that bill, along with Los Lobos. So thanks so much and good evening. Keep it arty.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. Madeline Spencer, please.
Good evening, council and city staff. I'm actually going to speak this evening about economic development. On, only a couple, a month ago, you guys had RSG come up, and they asked for an amendment to extend their contract, because they had gone out, outside of their scope of work to do community engagements. And you guys denied that. And I just want to go back a little bit, because from March to March of 2014 to 2015, you guys had a group that you guys pulled together of about 10 people that you guys actually commissioned to come and choose from four different groups in the city to do a plan for economic development. And right now, we had on that same day, the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce come in and ask for TOT tax to be put towards marketing and development. And my main concern about economic development is that if there's not a plan, as the city manager likes to say all the time, it's a plan to fail. And it's the only measure of accountability that we as a city have after strategic planning. We have an economic development plan. We currently don't have somebody who's a lead anymore in economic development, because Kelly Renders is gone. And I just want to say that if you look up the comprehensiveness of the category that is economic development, and all of the funding streams that are currently coming into the city, from capital improvements, from the M2 funds with the transit, we have a lot of economic development areas that need to be in a plan so that this community and others can make sure that we're on track when we're spending those funds. The key components of economic development include the environment, human capital, critical infrastructure, regional competitiveness, social inclusion, health, safety, workforce, literacy and education, and sustainability. And right now, as I said, we have a lot of different kinds of economies. And economies that are gonna be starting up in Santa Ana, including the transit system. And my question is, what are we gonna do if we don't have a plan? It would have been done by June 30th by RSG, and what is the plan for that now?
Thank you. With that, Ms. City Manager, any report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Two good reports. The first one is, we had a very, very successful Cinco de Mayo. We had over 160,000 people. The mechanical rides were back, they were well-used. Thank you for all the support and leadership. I definitely want to thank Harado Muette who's here and his team. And there was an arts and cultural exhibit about the history of Cinco de Mayo for the first time. It was very, very good, they had good entertainment, so a resounding success. And then I also want to mention, because last meeting, we couldn't do it, was our library. There's 123,000 libraries in the United States. And we received an award for one of the top five in the United States. And the mayor and staff and the patron of the library will be going to Washington DC, I believe on June 2nd, to receive this prestigious award. It also comes with a monetary award. And so we're very, very proud of our library and the investment that's been made over the last few years. And to be one of the top five libraries out of 123,000 is remarkable. And we're very grateful to the council for the support. That's my report, thank you.
All right, so with that, let's start with Council Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like for you, and ask you if you can close the meeting in honor of Chris Chavez, the young man that was hit a couple of weeks ago. And I know we have a, you know, it just brings great sadness to me. And I know, I've talked about this issue several times, about pedestrian fatalities. And I continue to tell not only my colleagues, but people across the country that, you know, talking about pedestrian fatalities is not sexy. You know, we talk about gang violence and gang shootings, you know, that, that seems to always get people's attention. But there's more people dying being hit by cars than by bullets across this country, across this region, and across the city here. And, and it's problematic. We have people dying. And I know we're doing our Vision Zero plan, but it has to be, continuing to be in the forefront as, as we see this young man, 26 years of age, you know, has died. And it's unfortunate, his family. And I'm hopeful, you know, and I want to thank our chief and our city manager for moving forward and putting that $10,000, we've been able to match that to $20,000 and hoping that we find the person that hit the young man, Chris Chavez. And I just want to send my condolences to his family and to, you know, the Santa Fe High School District and Saddleback High School. It's, it's just a really sad time. But this is just not the first time that we've talked, we've talked about this, you know. I also just wanted to make mention, because a resident approached me about the fatality that happened on Main and 10th Street with her mother. And she was in the news when they were discussing fatalities. And just wanting to know where we're at about putting the light. I know there's been discussions on Main and 10th, if, if we need to put a light there or not. And I know she's been in communication with our public work staff. And I would like to get an update to see where we're at with that. Because this has to continue to be a top priority. I was supposed to have a meeting with our Public Works Director about, you know, the Santa Ana Mobility Plan. Unfortunately, I didn't realize I was traveling very far last Friday. I was literally almost in Bakersfield, I was in Tohome Ranch. And I didn't realize it was that far. And so I was like, I would never make it back by 3:00 PM. So my apologies, Fred, and hoping to reschedule, to, to review that plan and hoping that it comes to the city council for approval so that we can deal with the infrastructure, making sure that the road is for all users and that it's safe for our residents. I then just want to also make mention, I know we, the last council meeting or prior, we moved forward with, you know, an RFP to do some of our, you know, our branding. And so we had another RFP in regards to communication and media. You know, those things are always in the forefront, everything that we're talking about, wanting to make sure that we're on track and wanting to get an update on that as well. And what are the next steps? As we talk about the economic strategic plan, you know, we're now, now behind. I'm, I'm hopeful. And I'm not sure if this brought to the city council at the last meeting and it wasn't approved. I'm unclear. I, I left, and it's just my hope that if that was the case, and my colleagues reconsidered that, because we did make a commitment to assuring that we were able to include all stakeholders and go out there into the community. So wanting us to keep that in mind. And then, lastly, I just want to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day that is coming up on Sunday. And wish my colleague, Angie, a Happy Mother's Day. Maria, you know, a Happy Mother's Day. It's always a, a holiday that is not always easy for me, but as the years have gone by, it's, it's much easier. But I also want to wish my mother Happy Mother's Day as she's in heaven. And want to wish you all a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank the staff for, and Harado and his team, and the police officers, and everybody who was out there this weekend. I don't know what it was, but there was a magic sort of during the weekend. Maybe it was the weather, maybe it was something else, or maybe it was those carnival rides coming back. But, you know, the streets were full, people, there were lines at these booths that were just, you know, 15, 20 people long. But everybody was having a great time, so great job on that. I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager, and your staff. I know that there was a request made by the Delhi Neighborhood Association on a roundabout. And Fred, thank you for that, on Central Avenue, right across the street from the center and the school there. So I know Julie was working very hard on that. As well as some of the requests that were made at the last Sandpoint Neighborhood Association meeting that I was at, there was a request for some issues that needed to be resolved regarding some pine needles and some pine trees. So thank you, staff, for getting and staying on top of that. And I believe there was a few other issues, I think some public safety issues that are being addressed out there. So thank you all. And, you know, I saw my colleague step down, but I, I think she's much, much too humble. I wanted all of us to take a moment to congratulate her. Day after tomorrow, they're gonna be swearing her in as the next president of the Southern California Association of Governments. What we don't realize sometimes is that is a huge, huge honor. And that is a very esteemed and important role. So it's, you know, she's gonna be the president of Leo, a national organization. And she's gonna be the president of SCAG. She's going to continue holding her seat at the Metropolitan Water District and a number of other things that if, if we stayed here, we'd be here very late. So congratulations, council member. And, you know, I think all of us are very proud of the work that you were, that you're doing. And the mayor and I were just talking about that a little earlier. So, you know, you, I know you're gonna represent us well. I know you have all the leadership qualities to lead that and do many more things that this county needs. So we appreciate that. And finally, I also want to wish my mother a Happy Mother's Day and all the mothers out there. It's a, it's a very special day. I don't have my father with me, he's been gone for the past 20 years. So my mother is my, you know, is, is, is my everything. And so for those of us who still have our mothers, let's embrace them, let's kiss them, let's let them know how much we care and love them, because time is fleeting. And sometimes when you have them, we, we tend to, you know, neglect and always believe that they're gonna be around forever and they're immortal. But, you know, just having them near, to me, always gives me a sense of just calm and peace and, and just being blessed. So to all the people out there who have their mothers, please take a moment to wish them well. And with that, I'll say, good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank staff for another successful Cinco de Mayo. I know a lot of work goes into that. And I want to let Harado know that I feel so proud that the Santa Ana Public Library was selected as one of the top five libraries in the nation. I think that's awesome, so thank you for all the hard work. I do want to congratulate Michelle also. That's awesome, Michelle. I'm so glad to hear that you'll be the vice president of SCAG. Oh, president? I'm sorry, I heard vice president. President of SCAG, excuse me. That's awesome, good for you. And I do want to mention that today is Teacher Appreciation Day. So all the Santa Ana teachers, do want to thank them for the hard work and dedication that goes into every day with your students, just not only teaching them what to count or read, but teaching them to be good citizens and kind to each, to one another. I think the work that teachers do is, is great. And I do want to send a shout out to all the Santa Ana teachers. And finally, I too want to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day. I don't have my mom with me, but I will be celebrating with my mother-in-law and my sister-in-laws. I do want to wish all of them a Happy Mother's Day as well. And have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna?
Sure, absolutely. Like always, we, we live in the desert, doesn't look like it, but police conserve water. We really are in a difficult situation, probably more than you realize. So every little bit definitely helps out. Cinco de Mayo was an absolutely fantastic event. Got a lot of great positive feedback. So definitely kudos to, to all the staff and moving in that direction. I too definitely want to thank the Teachers of the Year Award, it are actually taking place today at, at Santa Ana High School. We will be inviting them and recognizing them here at this level as well. These are the, the teachers that are rolling up their sleeves day in and day out and really having a major impact in our kids. And they're shaping our future. And we definitely need to show our respect and, and our appreciation to them, not only for the week, but, but definitely here in a formal setting. So I definitely want to do that as they come through. And as always, shop Santa Ana. I know we got a new video coming out relatively soon. The more dollars you keep in Santa Ana, the, the positive ripple effects are absolutely huge. And this is the one thing we have complete control over versus any kind of grants or any type of additional taxes. So if you're able to wait until you get to Santa Ana, whether you're driving on that last fumes of mile till you get into Santa Ana, Miguel, we really appreciate every step of it. If and when you run out, let me know, I'll go pick you up. Make sure we put, get gas in Santa Ana.
I'm gonna take you up on that, because I got down to, you know, from 10 miles to 5 to 4, and I'm thinking about Roman, and all of a sudden I'm getting, and I got 1 mile. Now, Councilman Benavides is telling me he's gone on fumes and below zero. And once I even ran out of gas, but I will call you.
When that happens, you call me, I'll be more than happy to go pick you up.
I will call you. Long as you don't run out of gas getting to me, we'll be okay.
Well, that would be a story, wouldn't it?
We'll be okay.
Well, thank you so very much again, shop Santa Ana. Happy Mother's Day, Mom, I absolutely love you. If it wasn't for you, I would not be anything close to what I am today. You're my inspiration, you're my love, you're my passion. Thank you so very much for putting up with this crazy person.
Thank you. Councilman Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do commend you and thank you, Mrs. Reyna as well, because your son is a lot to put up with. So commend you for doing that for so many years. You know, this is a wonderful city we live in. Cinco de Mayo, couple of days of just celebration, celebrating culture, people, and a place to be this weekend, commend your staff and, and all of the different departments that had to, you know, all hands on deck to make that happen. To, so Parks and Rec and your team, we've, over the years, it's become one of those kind of, almost kind of catch-all departments, whether it be events or library or, or youth programs. And y'all are doing a great job out there. So commend you for that, library and the recognition there as well. Also, just want to thank all of the members of the community who came out for the Peace and Unity March and Rally. Again, we had an opportunity to recognize the organizers earlier today, but it was the community coming together. Want to thank the, my colleagues on, on the council who were able to make it there as well. I know we all shared and, and just knowing that we have a great community here in Santa Ana and supporting and being a part of this, this rally was a great thing. A couple of things, mentioning, again, there's a lot of great things that, that our community does. And coming at the end of the May, at the end of the month, May 21st, will be another opportunity for us to, to go out and support the nonprofits and the faith community and businesses in town as they come together for another Love Santa Ana Initiative Serve Day. This is, this is going to be out in Ward 1, actually, the Cedar Evergreen neighborhood, neighborhood that we know has faced some challenges. So we have already several hundred community, or several hundred volunteers, I understand, that are planning to come together to paint murals and, and work with Madison Elementary School as well and the Neighborhood Association out there as well. Plant trees with our Public Works Department, cover up graffiti, and number of, of different beautification efforts. So want to encourage the community to participate. There's a lovesantaana.org is a website, and then there's also a Facebook page, Love Santa Ana Initiative, where you can learn more and come out and be a part of just this wonderful event of loving on our city. And just a, a couple of comments that were made tonight that I, I would like our, our staff to consider and make note of and potentially, well, do, do some follow-up on. One is, the economic development plan, it's something that we had, we did make a certain amount of investment. Did follow up with staff, you know, the contract, contractor that we had brought on to complete the, the project apparently ran over the last 30 35,000, you know, I was wondering whether they might be able to complete it for less than that. The response I got was that staff was going to go ahead and do that, and I think it is important that we ensure that we do have that completed, so we do have something to, to work on, so hopefully we can get an update on that, since the city manager, to, again, have that tool. The other is, there were some comments made this evening by a resident business owner in town regarding our business license fees, and we do have a committee on finance economic development, you know, perhaps that's something that, that committee can, can look at, and look at a comparison. I've, this is not the first time that I've, I've heard various different fees to do business in town, whether it's to pull permits, to do some type of construction project, or, or mainly around the, the issue of, of business license fees. In my, my business in, in real estate, a number of different colleagues in the industry also have brought up the, the cost of, of having a license, to be able to not only having your real estate office have a license, but also as, as Realtors as well, so, you know, sometimes it just, we, we do need to take a step back and see where we are with other neighboring cities municipalities, because we, we do want to send a message and, and that we are a business-friendly city, and that we're not, that don't have the highest fees, or, or have layers of fees for the purpose of, of, you know, trying to get as much funds from those who are trying to do business and, and create jobs in, in our, in our community. So with those comments and requests for, for some follow-up on that, I do want to wish my mother a Happy Mother's Day, and blessed to have my mom still with me, and so many wonderful mothers in, in our town, our cities, want to, and our staff as well, I just want to wish you all a Happy Mother's Day this weekend.
Thank you for that. I just have a couple items. One is that I had the privilege of participating in the Orange County Marathon and Half Marathon, and as I, yeah, this last weekend, as I, yeah, I ran. I did the half marathon, it was two hours and 11 minutes. Did you finish it? And, yeah, yeah, and two hours, and not only that, I was running against the mayor of Newport, you know, Irvine, and Costa Mesa. Mayor of Costa Mesa, wonderful guy, but, you know, he, from the beginning said he's going to go slow. Mayor of Newport, on mile six, she caught an Uber, and, and it's 13 mile long, to her credit, she told us, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to, I have other things, I'm going to catch an Uber, so she had a car waiting. And, no, no, it's 13 miles, on mile six, she was gone, she never finished. You know, sometimes Uber can be very, very convenient. And then the mayor of Irvine, Stephen Choi, you know, he was training, he had a pacer, you know, and we were running together, and, you know, fortunately I took off, I got there in 2:11, at 3:39, he still hadn't crossed, so he did finish, because later I saw an email, but anyways, I'm happy to report that, what I'd like to do is I've asked our Parks and Recs Director to please contact some of the folks that participated, maybe we can give them a little recognition, I know in particular, I was very-
Our own staff, Julie participated, and Jorge.
Yes, Jorge, yes, and not only that, but there were 30 kids from PAL, from the PAL program, they've been training and running, and it was just so wonderful to see them there, so I'd like to invite them maybe at the next council meeting, you know, just recognize them for their efforts, especially those little PAL kids in particular, I was so proud of them, they, they had like the US flag, and then the PAL flag, and they were running, and everybody's cheering them on, and, you know, and, and, you know, some are, I don't know, you know, 10, 12 years old, but some of those other guys were younger than that. And, yeah, and they did it, they, they kept their pace, and, you know, they have like 50 that run, the top 30 got to participate, and anyways, it, it was extremely nice, so, so I want to acknowledge them at a future council meeting. Then the other is, I want to wish every mother, including my own wife, Laura, who's a wonderful mother, and my mother-in-law, you know, who's around, unfortunately, my mother is deceased, and for any of you that have lost your moms, you know what I'm talking about, it's never ever the same. So for all of you that are so fortunate to have your, your mothers alive and around you, you can never say I love you too many times, or, or give them too much love. So with that, I want to now, Council Martinez requested Chris Chavez, I want to please adjourn in, in, in Chris's name, and Madam Clerk, if you could please do all the formalities and contact the family and give them our condolences, please. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.